Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting. It's good to see everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. We'll start the way we always do with introductions, starting with our clerks. We'll work right to left.
Good evening. I am Christine Smith, Clerk to the Board. Welcome.
Good evening. I am Arlissa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good evening and welcome. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram, and I serve on the County Commission at Large.
Good evening. I am Mecklenburg County Commissioner Elaine Powell, representing District One. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm George Dunlap, elected by the people of District Three. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lee Altman, County Commissioner, serving at large. Welcome to all of our guests.
Good evening and welcome. My name is Mark Jarrell. I've been elected by the people of District Four. I also have the honor of serving as Chair.
Good evening and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin, and I serve you as your County Commissioner at Large.
Oh, you read it for me? Oh, I'm sorry. I was busy looking at perusing the audience. Let me first say thank you for being here tonight. My name is Vilma De Leek, and I represent the most powerful district in the county. That's District Two. So if you live in District Two, welcome. We're glad you're here tonight.
Good evening. I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District Five.
Good evening. I'm Susan Rodriguez McDowell, and I'm elected by the people of District Six.
Good evening. I'm Dina Diorio, County Manager.
Good evening, Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
All right. Tonight's invocation will be led by Vice Chair Altman, and she'll also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was written by John Saxon. "Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, we ask for blessings on the people who have been called to serve the community in which we live, work, and play. Help us not to ask first, how do we fix this? But what do we need to learn? And to whom do we need to listen? We remain mindful that everybody is our sibling, and that throughout the ages, prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least amongst us: our children, our elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no home, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit; the strangers and the immigrants in our midst; those who live on the margins; those who are alone; and those who are forgotten. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This, we pray, in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true, and may it be so." Amen.
Amen.
Well, now to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, the Chair will turn the gavel over to the Vice Chair to lead us through awards and recognition and our public art moment. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you again. At this time, I will call upon Commissioner Meyer, who will be bringing forth the proclamation regarding reentry month.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there somebody here you know?
We were not given any.
Okay, okay. Just checking. Okay. I'm very honored to read this. This is near and dear to my heart, this cause, and I am very proud of what Mecklenburg County does for those who are coming out of incarceration. So I'm so proud to read this. Whereas North Carolina was the third state to join reentry 2030, a national program focused on ensuring every person released from prison succeeds in reintegrating into society. And whereas Mecklenburg County established reentry services in 2013 to serve those returning to the county upon release from prison. And whereas Mecklenburg County receives approximately 1,200 residents returning from state and federal incarceration annually, and approximately 11,000 people in Mecklenburg County are under correctional supervision at any given time. And whereas formerly incarcerated people are 10 times more likely to experience homelessness than those who have not been incarcerated, with the highest rates being those incarcerated more than once; those recently released; those of color; and women. And whereas the unemployment rate among the formerly incarcerated people is 27% higher than the U.S. unemployment rate at any point, and five times higher than the rate for the general U.S. population. And whereas 30% to 40% suffer from chronic diseases, up to 20% have significant mental illness, and 50% likely suffer from substance use disorder. And whereas every person leaving incarceration should have housing, employment, and health care, and should not be unfairly excluded from housing, employment, occupational licenses, or public benefits. And whereas, by focusing on prevention, reentry, and social support, we can ensure that Mecklenburg County supports and offers second chances and opportunities for all people. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mecklenburg County Board of County Commissioners joins the state of North Carolina and does hereby proclaim April 2025 as reentry month, and Mecklenburg County enurge all citizens to join in supporting persons and families living with criminal histories and those who work to ensure the transition back into the community is successful. This 15th day of April 2025, Mark Jarrell, Board, Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners, so moved.
Second.
All right. Sorry, did you want to? Were there people who wanted to come down and receive the proclamation and make any comments? And then we can vote.
Long walk down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Latasha Young, and I'm the Program Manager for Mecklenburg County Reentry Services, and I am honored to stand before you today during reentry month, a time dedicated to recognize the journeys, challenges, and triumphs of individuals returning to Mecklenburg County after incarceration. On behalf of Mecklenburg County Reentry Services and our local reentry council, thank you for recognizing the month of April as reentry month in Mecklenburg County. I would like to acknowledge the dedication and hard work of the individuals that provide services to our returning citizens. If you are present in the audience, please stand. You are... You are the bridge between incarceration and opportunity. Your work changes lives and strengthens our community every day. When we invest in reentry, we invest in safer, healthier, and more united communities. We will continue to build a future where justice-involved individuals have the chance to start again and succeed in Mecklenburg County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I was gonna... Actually, would you mind waiting there a moment? And let's see if any of my colleagues would like to be heard? Anyone on my right or left? Commissioner, Chairman Jarrell?
Thank you. Latash, thank you for your work. And, you know, one of the things that I'm really proud of is the way that Mecklenburg County has leaned in in this space. I think it's an area where we've been leading. It's an area that's needed, and you guys are doing the heavy lifting for us. And just, we are very, very thankful and grateful and just really proud to offer up this proclamation tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Commissioner Leek.
And I'm just speaking behind our chairperson because we have done this before. So we're not just starting this as a new thing tonight. We've been doing this as county commissioners and the county in support because we support the sheriff and what his efforts are in this community. And I remember the proclamation that we had some time ago, so this is not new. So I don't want the general public to believe that we're just doing this for the first time. Just make sure we keep doing it because you say for the month. So my question is, what are we going to do for a full month to support this process? So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek. Anybody else want to be heard? All right, we're going to vote, and then we'd love for you to come down and accept the proclamation. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you so much. Please come down.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your hard work.
Come back next year.
Thank you for your work. Thank you. We appreciate it.
That was a beautiful speech. Thank you. I love your fingernails. Thank you so much for your work.
All right. All right. At this time, I will turn to Chairman Jarrell to read the proclamation for the National County Government Month.
Well, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. It's really an honor to be able to read this particular proclamation because most of the time, in my years on the Board, Commissioner Dunlap used to remind us that most people don't realize how the county impacts their lives and all the work that's being done by the amazing folks that work for counties, not only here in Mecklenburg County, but across the nation. So it's an honor to read this tonight. And this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 330 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas counties, as intergovernmental partners, enact local, state, and federal programs to address the needs of all residents. And whereas Mecklenburg County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And whereas Mecklenburg County plays a vital role in the daily lives of its more than 1 million residents by delivering essential services such as public health, education, and literacy services, environmental protection, social services, and economic development. And whereas recognizing the importance of Mecklenburg County and its dedicated employees promotes greater civic engagement, supports intergovernmental collaboration, and highlights the essential role counties play in strengthening communities and enhancing quality of life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2025 as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, and residents to join in this special observance this 15th day of April 2025. Signed, Mark D. Jarrell, Chair, Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners. So moved, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there unreadiness, Commissioner Jarrell? Commissioner Dunlap?
No unreadiness, Madam Chair, but I just want to suggest that on behalf of Mecklenburg County that we send a copy of the resolution to the National Association of Counties.
That's a great suggestion. Anybody else want to be heard? Commissioner Townsend Ingram?
As the newest county commissioner, I just want to say thank you to everybody here. I appreciate the citizens for electing me to be a part of this great team, but I can emphatically say without a shadow of a doubt that this was the best onboarding, the best staff, the most intelligent, helpful staff that I have ever had the pleasure of being a part of, and I've worked in a lot of jobs. So I just want to thank you all for your professionalism, all of your knowledge, your willingness to share that knowledge. I'm very appreciative, and folks, they really do, you don't get paid a lot, so these are true servant leaders. So I just want to say that I appreciate you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Townsend Ingram. Would anyone else like to be heard? Commissioner Griffin?
Yeah, I mean, just to comment, I'm always trying to educate folk. There are 3,000... What's that number? 69. 3,069 counties in America. Mecklenburg County is one of those. It used to be the 60th wealthiest. I'm not sure where we are today.
I don't know about wealth, but we're the 41st largest in the country.
41st largest. Keep that in mind. Out of 3,069, we're the 41st largest county in America.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek.
I just want to add to this as relates to those who work for the county. We just cannot make it without you. You've heard that song. We have the best staff in the country of the number of county commissioners we have now. We have the best staff. People work hard and work long and solve problems that we ourselves cannot solve when we're in the midst of issues that's going on. And our manager, who happens to be the young lady with the beautiful hair down there, has served us well. So we can't say thank you enough because we couldn't pay you for the time that you put in, Dina.
Thank you.
People do not count the time that you are in the community trying to make sure that all is well in Mecklenburg County. So to you and to this great community, and to the new person who will be coming on, your shoes are heavy, honey. I don't know what size you wear, but when he put his on, he got to put on a double pair. So we want to thank this board for electing and selecting the person that we did select as our manager that will take your seat, and your seat is hard to fit, and that don't mean that you're fat either. But I just want to say thank you for all that you have done and will continue to do because you're a young woman. You don't go home and sit down. So we're looking for you to be involved in this community, to help us to make sure that the path that you've laid for us, that we will continue to move and be progressive as we do our work. Nine of us, not one of us, but nine of us work hard. And to our chairperson, we could not have elected a better person. Now, the people elect him for District Four, but nine, eight of us elect him to be the chairman of this board. He hadn't been in jail. He hadn't beat his wife. He hadn't run away. He hadn't slapped nobody. He's a gentleman. His class. So I just need to say that. Thank you so much for being the kind of person that you are, young man. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek. Any other comments from commissioners? All right, then I will say, if you're here in the chamber or you're watching on TV, you're already paying attention to county government. So thank you. Because what you already know and that we need to help the rest of the community understand is that so much important work does happen at the county level. We do have a $2.5 billion budget, which is your money, and we make really important policy that affects the quality of your life. And so while we all are very focused on what happens at the state and national level, and that's incredibly important, it's also important what happens at the county level for the well-being of all of us and for the high functioning of our democracy. So thank you for being here in the chamber or on TV, and help us spread the good word. So, having been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it is unanimous. At this time, I will turn to Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell for our public art moment.
Thank you. This is an absolute privilege that we have so many people in the chamber tonight to hear the public art moment this month. So the Mecklenburg County Public Art Collection is a valuable asset that promotes our cultural heritage and artistic development, contributes to economic development and tourism, adds warmth, dignity, beauty, and accessibility to public spaces, and expands the experience and participation of residents with visual arts. This collection is made possible by the Mecklenburg County Percent for Art Ordinance. ASC, that's the Arts and Science Council, partnered with Mecklenburg County Geospatial Information Services to map the public art collections of Mecklenburg County, City of Charlotte, and private commissions managed by ASC. Next slide. Okay, mine isn't changing. Yours is. All right. This online tool that you see up here allows users to explore the 203 current artworks created through the Percent for Art ordinances, as well as search for artworks based on specific locations. The map can be found on ASC's website, which is, you can Google it, but it's https://artsandscience.org-publicart. So here you can see the complete map showcasing the distribution of artworks throughout the county. The blue dots denote artworks owned by Mecklenburg County. Next slide. Map users can discover artwork details by clicking on any dot. Information pertaining to the selected artwork's address, artwork's title, artwork's name, type of artwork, and owner are listed for every artwork. The selection displayed here provides for information for open stacks by artist Martha Klippinger at the North Regional Library. Move to the next slide. Artworks can also be found by their address. Map users can explore artworks cited throughout Mecklenburg County by typing specific addresses into the map's search bar. Once an address is provided, the map will display artworks within the selected mile radius. The Arts and Science Council would like to share our gratitude to Mecklenburg County's Geospatial Information Services for their expertise and collaboration to make this map possible. We would particularly like to thank GIS Director Gia Wei and Senior GIS Analyst Scott Black for their excellent work. So unfortunately, you didn't get to see that many artworks, but now you have the tools to see all of them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell. And at this time, I will return the gavel back to the Chairman.
Well, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I appreciate that. We're going to move to the next part of the agenda, which is the public appearance portion of this agenda. I do have a lengthy statement to read. I'm going to ask everybody to pay attention to the instructions. Public appearance is the period during the Board's regular meeting that members of the public are provided the opportunity to speak on matters not appearing on the agenda. Members of the public who appear during the public appearance portion of a regular meeting may discuss any matter within the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners except for the following types of matters. A matter which appears on the agenda of that meeting of the Board. A matter which concerns the candidacy of any person for public office, including the candidacy of the person appearing before the Board. A request that the Board considers funding a certain program or activity, either from the current budget or by inclusion in a future budget. Such requests would be made at the Board's annual budget public hearing. The time limit for speaking is three minutes unless there are four or more speakers who wish to speak concerning the same matter, in which case all persons wishing to speak on the same matter will be considered a group and given a total of 10 minutes. The Board reserves the right to alter these rules on a case-by-case basis as necessary for the efficient and effective conduct of business. Members of the Board will not engage in dialogue with public appearance speakers. Comments will be received and followed up upon as applicable by county staff and/or members of the Board. Handouts and/or tokens shall be given to the clerk for distribution to the Board at the conclusion of the meeting. Members of the public can access and view the meeting on the government channel or So with that being said, we're going to move to our speakers. Madam Clerk, it's going to go a little bit out of order because we have multiple speakers signed up for the same topic. The speakers that are signed up for the same topic, you all are going to be considered a group by this Board, and you're given 10 minutes total to speak. What we'll do is, the folks that are going to be speaking around the training facility, I'm going to ask you to come to this podium. I'm going to give you some time so that you can figure out the order in which you want to speak. You will see the clock, and you'll be able to divvy that up. The other folks that are speaking, I'm going to ask you to come to the podium on my right. I'm going to call you all first, and you all will be given three minutes. The first speaker is going to be Diana Pollard. Ms. Pollard, before you speak, let me call off the speakers that we have listed for the training facility issue. Xavier Torres de Janon, Kaia Allen, Sophie Summer, Rafaela Vaca, Mina Ezike, Perry Salmon, and V. Lopez. All those speakers should be to my left, and I'll call on you once we finish with Ms. Pollard. Welcome, Ms. Pollard, and thank you.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners. My name is Diana Pollard, and I'm honored to stand before you as the president of the Charlotte chapter of the National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals. Now, joined by our chapters directors, members, and committee advocates. Thank you. We come before you not only as real estate professionals, but as engaged citizens deeply committed to the economic health and future of Mecklenburg County. Tonight, we share highlights of our 2024 State of Hispanic Homeownership Report. And while this report focuses on Hispanic households, we brought this message to this. Housing affordability is a Mecklenburg County issue impacting families across all backgrounds, not only Hispanics. Despite elevated home prices and stomachly high interest rates, Hispanic families are fueling homeownership growth. In 2004 alone, 238,000 new Hispanic households became homeowners, more than any other democratic group, accounting for 35 of the total homeownership gain nationwide. For me as a Latina and a president of the Charlotte chapter, that is not just a progress. This is resilience and a belief in the American dream. Yet, this same momentum is being tested by the urgent affordability crisis. We also want to recognize the work already underway by this Board to address the high demand for affordable housing. Mecklenburg County's election for the second cohort of the Counties of Housing Solution Program by the National Association of Counties and Smart Growth America as an impact is straightforward, as one of just seven nationwide participating this spring. A county is engaging in a structure, a 12-week process, to develop affordable housing from site evaluation to public engagement to partnership developing and financing strategies. We come in proactive leadership in helping move the needle on supply and accessibility. As we continue this work, we respectfully urge you to prioritize two critical actions within your scope of leadership. Invest in workforce developing into tight housing, and second, provide target property taxes relief in the middle-income homeownership. Over the construction industry alone... Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great point. Diana, if you have written remarks, you can certainly give them to the clerk and we'll take them, or you can just send them to us.
Thank you.
The email. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Before we turn to our group that's speaking to the training facility, let me put, make sure Elise Redmond and Anjanet Austin are on deck to come to this mic in a few minutes. So I'll turn to the training facility group, you all have 10 minutes, thank you.
Good evening. First of all, to clarify, I signed up as an individual, not as a group, so I'm not sure why I'm being lumped up with other people. My name is Javier, I am a taxpayer, I'm a property owner, and I'm a criminal defense attorney in Charlotte, North Carolina, and I'm here to talk about what's been called the Public Safety Training Center, also called the Advanced Manufacturing Campus, also called the Community Lifeline, also called Cop City. The number of names reflects the issue that I will talk very briefly about, since now we only have 10 minutes. The lack of transparency. CPCC is trying to build with $116 million of taxpayer dollars, a cop city, a militarized police training academy on Levine campus. They want to clear over 30 acres of trees, including heritage trees and natural habitats of many animals, to build a firing range, to build a burn tower, to build a driving course, and many other militarized police training facilities next to Levine campus. Levine campus has a community college, as well as a minors' high school there. I want to talk about money, though, because that's what this county is giving CPCC. CPCC is saying that they have $116 million of our money, of this county's money. I found in the 2025 budget, 75 millions of those dollars. I cannot find the other $41 million. I asked my commissioner, Commissioner Meyer, for help, and she pointed me to fiscal year 2024. So I looked, and I couldn't find the $41 million there. Instead, I found a reference to $60 million that were apparently approved in fiscal year 2022. Then I looked to fiscal year 2022, but I couldn't find it there. So then I looked to fiscal year 2023, and I found that $60 million are referenced with no more information, and it says that this project will begin being constructed in 2023. This, of course, didn't happen, it's 2025 now. What has started now is clearing of over these 30 acres with still no information about what this project is about. I have asked Commissioner Meyer for information. Dr. Candy Ditemeyer of CPCC says there's reports, there's assessments, there's plans, there's designs, but where are they? We can't find them on the internet. We get kicked out of meetings when we go to CPCC meetings, they tell us that it's closed sessions, then CPCC bans people from campus, and now this commission, this county itself, is giving us 10 minutes to talk as a group. It seems that this project will continue in this veil of lack of transparency. There's no answers that the public is asking to CPCC. Instead, all we get is, well, the money was approved, but where is even the money coming from? I can only find $75 million of those $116 million that our county dollars are supposed to pay. I am an attorney, and so I will end with a request for a remedy, a prayer for relief. And my request to you all is that you perform an audit to CPCC. All these things that I just mentioned, the assessment, the design, the plan, the budget, the programs, everything, where is it? Why hasn't this county asked more questions when it's trying to give $116 million, or maybe it's 135, or maybe it's 75? I don't even know anymore. Not only am I asking for an audit, I am asking for a way for you all to hold that money and prevent construction from continuing until you get answers. I was told by Commissioner Meyer that now that the money is given, well, the money is there, it was allocated, so it has to continue. But I have seen these commissioners ask so many questions to homeless shelters, to CMS, and to other county programs, drilling them for budget lines, drilling them for accounting. And so I ask you, that is my request, that you do the same drilling that you do for homeless shelters, for programs that are for social services, to a police training facility. I will not bore you with the issues of policing, because I'm sure other people will talk about that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophie Summer, and I am a student at UNCC. On April 30th, 2019, Tristan Terrell opened fire on campus and killed two students. I was not a student there at the time, and thus have no connection to him besides our shared alma mater, except for one thing. He was living in the prison right next to my high school. For those who don't know, next to my high school back in Raleigh is Central Prison. The reason I bring this up is because I have the unique experience of pushing through fear while trying to go to classes next to a facility filled with weapons I could only pray the wrong person didn't get their hands on, an experience that Central Piedmont Community College wants to force its students through. They are using this taxpayer money to build a heavily militarized first responder training facility on their campus. They have shared plans of a firing range and burn tower near students. I remember staring up at guard towers while in the carpool line every morning, waiting to be dropped off at school and feeling my heart against my rib cage. Going to school next to a prison was a stressful experience that I cannot, that I can say without a doubt negatively impacted my ability to learn. Knowing all those guns were night, right next to my classrooms while I was trying to learn pre-calc or world history was a nightmare. My friends and I would whisper to each other our fears of one day something going wrong and how we could end up as collateral damage. Building this facility puts the students who just want to safely learn at CPCC's Levine campus in the same situation. While I can understand concerns about wanting to make sure our first responders are the best prepared they can be, tearing down 38 acres of beautiful woodland with taxpayer dollars that could be going towards libraries or investment into local businesses is not the way to go about it. Putting guns closer to college campuses is not in our best interest, especially approaching the six-year anniversary of the deaths of Ellis Prelier and Riley Howell. I know the prospect of this being a real threat sounds rare, but may I remind you, Terrell was a CPCC student himself before he transferred to UNCC. I am begging you, please don't make things easier for the next school shooter.
I'm reaching out as a concerned resident of Mecklenburg County to urge you to stop funding the police training facility at CPCC's Levine campus. The county has committed a staggering $116 million to this project despite no clear evidence that it will provide a direct and meaningful benefit to the community. Meanwhile, the county's own resident budget priority survey shows that residents overwhelmingly support funding for access to affordable housing, behavioral health resources, healthy food programs, services for senior adults, and workforce development services. Yet these critical needs received a combined total of only $36.2 million, less than one-third allocated to the training facility. Meanwhile, safety and security was ranked among the lowest priorities in the survey. With this funding, the county's message is that you would rather kill and imprison us than give us resources to prevent incarceration. The federal government is currently shutting down grants for community health and justice while the county is putting taxpayer money towards increased surveillance and militarization of police. Just this past month, a $500,000 EPA grant to north Mecklenburg neighborhoods to install air sensors for education, advocacy, and health services was terminated. $500,000 is a measly amount compared to $116 million, and I ask that you redirect those funds. That the federal government has taken away from your constituents that are dying prematurely from polluted land, air, and water. Furthermore, we ask that you force CPCC to conduct environmental impact assessment on the forests that they are clearcutting, not a site assessment, which was already conducted and found no toxic materials in the forest, because obviously it's a forest. We demand a comprehensive environmental impact assessment, because I know that there are vernal pools on that site. Vernal pools are critical wetlands that serve as natural flood control, improve water quality, and provide habitat for wildlife, including fish, frogs, and salamanders. We need those forests intact for cleaner air, land, and water. We need that funding for remediating polluted land and for providing resources to communities, not to continue this practice of putting more police on the streets to serve corporate interests in the ruling class. Deep on CPCC and require an environmental impact assessment. Thank you.
Hi, Board of Commissioners, my name is Perry Salmon, and so this is the 14 Characteristics of Fascism by Dr. Lawrence Britt, and he studied a lot of fascist regimes, and one of them was obsession with crime and punishment. Under fascist regimes, the police are given almost limitless power to enforce laws. People are often willing to overlook police abuses and forego civil liberties for patriotism and national police force with virtually unlimited power in fascist nations. I am against the training center for the police. I'm afraid, I don't want to be afraid of the police, I want to, I want to know that they are there for our protection, for our safety, not for the government and corporations' safety. And I want to know that our county cares about their people and for social problems, and not, not for militarization, and not for corporations. And this is not, is this going to solve any problems? What problems are, is this going to solve? And I'm also against any ties that the police department has to Israel. Israel has committed war crimes and genocide against Palestinians due to a lack of accountability. And Zionism is wrong, because it is religious superiority, and excusing war crimes and genocide.
Thank you all for your comments. Thank you. We'll turn to Elise Redmond and Anjanet Austin, both have three minutes.
With your permission, we just wanted to share Keith's picture, so that you guys could see what we're here for. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. This is truly an honor, truly an honor to be here and to speak to you. Can you hear me? I may be the first lawyer that you all meet that hates to speak in public, so just so you know. My name is Elise Redmond. Today is my birthday. I cannot think of being anywhere better or doing anything more meaningful for my birthday than standing here tonight, talking to you about Keith Austin, Mateo Lopez, all the other preventable drownings, Lake Norman, water safety, and how we, as a collaborative community, can change a very tragic narrative together. The older I get, the more time I spend thinking about purpose, what I'm supposed to be doing, making my life worth living. By way of background, I am a native charlatian, a longtime North Carolina practicing attorney, and a 20-year resident of Lake Norman. Further, I was on the inaugural board of the Ronald McDonald House of Charlotte, spent six years in tenure there, and was the first female chair of that organization. I have created two nonprofit organizations of my own, and started out at the age of 14 as a volunteer candy striper at what was then the Charlotte Memorial Hospital. I believe it is my obligation in life to help others, others in my Mecklenburg County community. Mecklenburg County is my home. Look at the time, I'll be quick. October 2022, Mateo Lopez, a young man drowned off my neighbor's dog. My entire family watched this tragedy unfold and felt helpless in providing assistance. The young man was one of nine people to drown in Lake Norman, our Lake Norman, that year. After hours of searching, our rescue teams found Mateo 40 feet deep under the water in my backyard. My son Cade, who was 13 at the time, turned to me and said, "Mom, it's like it didn't even happen." That was after all the rescue personnel had left. That observation from the mouth of a babe, my child, stunned me. It did matter. Mateo drowned in front of us, his life mattered, no different than if it was my own child or one of yours. The man that tried to save him, I'm running out of time, so I'm going to go super quick. Keith Austin was an all-star athlete from South Mac High School, one of the tragic victims. We have a Lake Norman Marine Commission that needs to be better, it needs to collaborate, it needs to have community outreach, it needs to educate our community. We need your help, we need your help with your appointee on our commission, and we need your help to provide assistance for Lake Norman and the tragedies that we face. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Austin, you didn't, did you have comments? Okay. Thank you.
Stop Cop City!
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 $160 million of taxpayer dollars spent on this stupid project! Shame!
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 Stop Cop City!
Stop Cop City!
All right, we're going to move to the next item on our agenda, which is a public
hearing. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to open a Tefra public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed financing by Novant Health. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and properly seconded. Is there any unreadiness? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? Are there any speakers, Madam Clerk, signed up?
No, sir.
No. Okay. I've asked the board to allow me to read the entire paragraph before interrupting for the motion in the second. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Mecklenburg County, North Carolina, Approving the Issuance of Revenue Bonds of the National Finance Authority, a Component Unit of the Business Finance Authority, a Component Unit of the Business Finance Authority of the State of New Hampshire for Novant Health Energy Projects by the Public Finance Authority in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $855 million for the Purposes Stated therein."
So moved.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is the Advisory Committee Reports. We are going to hear from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, their proposed FY26 Funding Allocation Plan and Annual Report, and I think Nicole Beverley is here. Hey, Nicole.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners, good evening. I am back for another year. My name is Nicole Beverley, I am the Chair for the JCPC Council of Mecklenburg County, and I am here to discuss our funding plan for 2026.
Speak in the mic, please.
In 2026. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, okay. So, the JCPC Council is a statutory authorized, I'm sorry, authorized advisory board. Our mission is to address the gaps related to our youth services promoting prevention, intervention, as well as treatment, aftercare strategies. We also support in relating to strengthening families and our county's safety.
There's a clicker on the podium.
Oh, there is? Oh, thank you. All right, perfect. So with the JCPC Council, we are charged to, for three things. So the first thing, our most important thing, is to ensure that we're reviewing the needs of juveniles who are delinquent or at risk in becoming court-involved. The second thing is to assess our local service needs, and then the third is, of course, bring our annual service proposal to you all tonight. This is a list of our current JCPC membership with, again, just a variety of people within our community that are both passionate, but also serving the county or serving our community. So for this year, North Carolina Department of Public Safety Division of Adult Corrections and Juvenile Justice allocates annual funding for JCPC. For the fiscal cycle 2026, Mecklenburg County's JCPC funding allocation is $2,51,713. As you guys can see, this is the list of the steps that we've taken throughout the last couple months in regards to our funding process and our calendar. Now this is our fiscal year 2026 Funding Allocation Plan, where we provided the list of programs that will be recommended to be funded, in the total amount, again, of $2,51,713. So we are asking for the board's action in recognizing appropriate fiscal 2026 Department of Public Safety Division of Juvenile Crime Prevention in the amount of $2,51,713, as well as approving that funding allocation recommended by our council.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Do any of my colleagues have questions? Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Thank you so much for your report, and I think that this, this board and this purpose is incredibly important. Being a former CMS teacher and having two adult male children, I know how critically important these programs are, knowing, you know, for their survival. important these programs are, knowing, you know, for their survival. My question is, how do you know, how do you anticipate where the most money should go? Is there, are there reports that you receive that say one program is working better than the other? Are there, you know, so that maybe next year you put more funding towards vocational and career development as opposed to another?
So we are provided with the list of the needs for our county, and we focus depending on those needs, as well as what's, the organizations also apply. So if there, there's a variety of programs that apply and based off the needs that are presented in the RFP, that's how we allocate the money.
Okay, so it's based on what they request, not necessarily how the program is performing?
So they can request the amount, and we recommend, we'll make that decision at the end, but we do also have our monitoring report, that we provide indicators in relation to the progression of the program. And that's provided, that's been provided to you as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Townsend Ingram. Let me just pause for a moment and ask the manager, is Ms. Harper here or some, should I have called someone from the department down or?
She's not here.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, just wanted to make sure I didn't fail to do that. Commissioner Powell had her hand up.
Thank you. Can you talk to how the money is spent on the mediation and responsive circles?
The...
With Cormac Cares?
So that is actually one of our new programs that we funded this, for this fiscal 2026 year, and I believe that should be, as well is in your packet as well. I believe they're programming related to just responsive circles, as well as programming outside of, I believe, out of, out of the, outside of their schools, if that makes, if that makes sense.
Do you have any experience with that? I'm just wondering.
I specifically don't. I'm not, I don't have experience in that. Again, this is one of our newer programs, but they're focused, I believe, on, hold on a second.
I'm happy to see it.
Restorative justice.
I'm happy to see it there because I've heard really good things.
Okay.
And that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know what your experience was and how you decided to include this at that level.
So I believe that that was also a specific need that the funding committee, the funding committee addressed during the funding decision and meeting. And from there, and I, if I'm correct, I might, I'm most likely correct, but that was one of the few programs in restorative justice that actually applied.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to recognize Commissioner Dunlap, who is representing the Board of County Commissioners on the JCPC, for which we're very grateful.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to say Nicole is being very modest. If you will recall, a couple of years ago, this committee was in disarray. They could never get enough people to come to the meeting to even decide who would get the funding. So after she agreed to accept the position as Chair, they now have orderly meetings. They no longer meet till 11 o'clock at night. She has brought order to the board and board processes. She has a committee that reviews every request, the amount of the request. They try to fund programs in different categories so that they're not funding continuously a bunch of programs that do the same thing. I wanted to first commend her on her leadership.
Thank you.
And to, to thank Sonya Harper, who is a very critical part of that committee and the way it operates. And I want to thank the committee as well, the people who voluntarily serve on the committee to make recommendations to the full body as to which programs ought to be funded and why. And if I recall, it was a unanimous decision on who it is that they would fund and support and recommend to this body to be allocated the funds by the committee. And so I said all of that so that I could now ask that I be recused from the vote.
And I actually don't know the basis for the request for recusal. Can you state it for the record? Either the attorney or you?
Well, I, I'm asking to be recused because I participated in the process, and I don't want to skew the vote of the board.
Already done there.
All right.
For the recusal, for the recommendation.
If that's appropriate, then may I have a second?
Second.
All right. The motion for recusal having been made improperly.
Hold on one second.
Yes, sir.
Madam Vice Chair, Madam Clerk.
Who made the motion?
Actually, I think you made it. He, he only asked to be recused.
He asked to be recused.
I'm sorry. Who's making the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
For him to recuse.
All right. Chair Darrell and Commissioner Griffin, all those in favor of the motion to recuse...
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Doesn't say anything. That's crap. Are you asking for funds to start this program? Is the program in operation?
This is just for the recusal motion.
I'm sorry.
This is just for the recusal at this point, Commissioner Leake. Your question is about the recommendation for the appropriation. Commissioner Dunlap is asked to be recused.
He sits on their board.
Right. And that's why he's asked to be recused.
And has spoken for them.
Well, he gave a comment, but he's asked to be recused.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yes, ma'am. So if there's no further unreadiness, all those in favor of the motion to recuse Commissioner Dunlap from this vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion is unanimous. Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, do you have any comments on the, anything you'd like to say?
Nope.
Anybody else want to be heard on the presentation? Commissioner Leake?
Thank you. I'm not against the program because of George Dunlap. I'm concerned about how many youth programs do we have? And it's not about being against you, young lady, at all.
Mm-hmm.
I attended a major meeting on safety in this community just Monday, and every time we have these meetings, they're asking for funds, and they need funds to pay staff. My concern is, what programs do we have? And if we have programs already for youth, how successful are they? And who is financing them? Are you asking us for this money for the first time? Have you, the program is already in place?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
So how much money have you gotten from the county?
Well, we're asking to just allocate the money that we, from DPS, $2,51,713.
This is state, this is state money.
Yeah. This is not county.
I know state money, the state money comes from us, too.
Well, you asked about county, and this is not county money, this is state money. I just want to make sure you were clear about that.
Our taxpayers' money go to Raleigh, and it comes back.
I understand, I understand. I just wanted to make sure you're clear.
And I understand that, too, Dina.
Okay, just checking.
All I'm trying to do is make sure, because these are my children that's getting killed out there. These are my families who are separated. These are my families who are struggling and trying to get a life for themselves in District Two. That's why we had that meeting on Monday. I've been working on this thing for over 10 years and longer. So it's not that I'm against it because of George Dunlap. I'm trying to make sure that the public see that we are not just accepting it because a member of the board sits on the board. He sits on many boards. No, I'm not against it, honey. I just want to make sure that what we say we're going to do, we're going to do it, and then you get the money to help pay the expense for the people who's working. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying in the first place.
Yes, ma'am.
So don't stop me from talking now.
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's why I'm trying to find out, how many youth programs do we have? And where are you, where are you stationed now?
So currently, we have 13 programs. For this fiscal 2026 year, we'll be having, we'll have 12. We've served 794 children, youth, and we plan to finish that with 10, with 1,022 by the end of the fiscal year. And you asked the question regarding where these programs, where they serve, they serve all across the county.
I'm sorry.
So the programs are scattered through the county. They're not in one specific area.
In different sections of the county.
Yes, ma'am.
Where's the one in District Two?
I don't know that on hand, but I could provide that information to you.
Let me share that with us so we can understand and support it if it's going to be, impact the people that it should, and not just because we're friends with folks. I'm not dealing with that from that perspective. I'm talking about making sure that when other folk come, it's not our friends with some of us up here, that they have the same rights that others have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Griffin? Did you want to be heard?
I'm good.
You're good.
I'm good.
All right. Chairman Darrell.
Thank you for your work, ma'am.
Thank you.
Nicole, thank you for the presentation. A couple of things. I know every year when we get the JCPC presentation, it is a little bit of noise and dust-up. Last year, I caused that from some comments that I made, and I, I use that as a learning experience to be more careful with the way that I phrase things, even though I was trying to come from an equity lens, when I was referring to the amount of times people have been funded through JCPC. And as I had a chance to take a step back, I have a greater appreciation for your job and the job of the committee, because when you have a limited amount of funding and you have, I mean, we have more nonprofits and programs than, we're not, this community's not lacking programming and nonprofits. All do, you know, most doing amazing work and a great job, but there's not enough funding. And everybody wants to tap the county or the state, or they think there's some magic money tree where, you know, we could just go pull dollars, and it doesn't work that way. And I wanted this year to make sure that my words landed differently, and that was with an appreciation for what you all are doing and an appreciation of how difficult trying to make these decisions, trying to split the baby. I know it can, can be difficult. And to the extent that we can get information that does show the proximity of the different programs, where are they, and any of that detailed information would certainly be helpful, but I didn't want this moment to pass this year without saying thank you, I appreciate it, and I also wanted to acknowledge the dust-up that I caused previously. So I hope, I hope you'll take that in the spirit in which I mean it, and I wanted to say it publicly. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. And I just want to thank our JCPC Council. We've worked really hard this year to ensure that we are selecting effective programs as well, ensuring that we make the thoughtful decisions and do it as a collective, and so I'm really proud of this council.
Yes.
Thank you. You know, and I'd like to say that prior to joining the Board of County Commissioners, I served on JCPC as a, as an attorney appointee and was really, you know, I just want to vouch to the community how difficult a job that board has to divvy up a relatively small amount of money to try to serve the needs of youth across this county and to find providers who have the skill set and track record to really deliver high-quality services, but also ensure that we aren't just always turning to legacy organizations, but folks who might have new skills or new approaches that could be really fantastic. That's a hard thing to navigate with so much on the line. So it really is an act of service that you have, you and your board invest all the time, Commissioner Dunlap investing all the time to be there and try to get the very best outcome. So I personally want to thank you and everybody who's a part of that process, Sonya Harper and her team also. So I think everyone has been heard at this time. Commissioner Leake, did you have one last comment?
Yes, I just want to make sure that we are understanding, I'm not fighting this program, and I'm not fighting Dunlap. I'm talking about what the public needs to know, where are we being successful and where we're not being successful? And if we've had trouble before, we're still having trouble now. And it may not be in one given area, but it's across this county. And that's what I'm speaking for, for District Two, because we met Monday to make sure we've been meeting, and we've been putting money out there. And all I'm saying is, we're not letting people on this board influence us because we're friends, but doing it because it's working, because the program is a work. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am. And from everything that I've ever observed, I have full confidence that you're choosing the very best programs that you can.
And I hope she understands what I'm saying.
So thank you again. Everyone, I think, has now been heard. So all those in favor, I'm sorry.
I did want to say one, one last thing. Nicole didn't say this either, but based on the rules of the board, she is ending her term as chairman, right as things begin to start clicking and working, but our policy states that she could not be reappointed as chair. And so she has graciously agreed, I think, to work with the, with the next chairperson. And I, I wish you guys would have been there for the discussion about the next chairperson. There were five people who turned down an opportunity to chair this committee, and she has done such a great job that I think she finally talked somebody into it. Can you share that with the board since they're going to have to monitor that?
Yes, so I, he graciously, graciously agreed, Tom Barnett. He has been on the council, I believe, now for a year and a half, and he has...
What's the name again? I can't hear you.
Tom Barnett, sorry. And he's graciously decided to be nominated as chair, as well as asking for my assistance to advise him for at least for a few months prior to, after he becomes chair, if he's appointed.
Well, that's very important, and all the more, we are so grateful to you. Yeah, people are not banging down the door to do this work. It truly is public service. So thank you again. At this time, I think I need a motion to approve the budget that has, in the amount, let's see, I need a motion to recognize and appropriate fiscal year 26 Department of Public Safety Division of Juvenile Justice Funds in the amount of $2,51,713. So moved.
And allocation.
And a motion to approve fiscal year 26 Funding Allocation Plan recommended by the Mecklenburg County JCPC. What'd you say?
B.
And adopt a grant project ordinance for fiscal year 26 Department of Public Safety Division of Juvenile Justice Funds and the General Grants Fund. So moved. Did I get it all?
Second.
Thank you. All right. This having been properly queued up for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous.
All right.
And I turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for leading us through that.
Does it show nine votes?
Excuse me?
Does it say nine votes?
I think it'll be eight, zero, because Commissioner Dunlap recused himself.
He recused. It's eight, eight, zero, unanimous. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'm going to turn it over to our county manager, Deorio, for a manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items under my manager's report tonight, but first, we'll have an update on Lotta Place. As you know, we recently unveiled the exciting new plans to the community, as well as to the stakeholders and partners who have worked with us on this project. We wanted to bring the update directly to you and to residents and viewers across the county. I am very proud of the county team, especially Deputy County Manager Leslie Johnson and the team at Park and Recreation and all of our stakeholders that serve on our stakeholder committee for their tireless efforts with this very special project. As you know, we closed what was formerly called Historic Lotta Plantation in June of 2021. Since the 1970s, that county property had served as a historic marker of 19th century life. But being a placeholder for the past doesn't do justice to honoring and understanding that era and the ancestors of the county. When we opted for a change in direction, it also opened the door for reinvention of the site. We knew we could create a space to share history, but from a sensitive, unbiased frame of reference for those seeking knowledge and understanding. We also drafted a mission statement to help focus our work with the guiding principles to include truth, transparency, compassion, transformation, and unity. The new era for Lotta Place has evolved into a journey of retrospection and healing. This project has afforded all involved a chance to revisit the past with hopes of reshaping the future. At the same time, we are working to maintain the integrity and values of the stories that should be preserved for generations to come. I closed Lotta Plantation because I knew we could honor history with more dignity and reverence for our ancestors, especially Mecklenburg County's African-American ancestors. Giving my... Given my upcoming retirement, I will not be able to see the Lada Plantation, Lada Place, through its transformation. But I am incredibly plaid of the work we've done. I look forward to the day when Lada Place reopens, ready to tell the stories of the past with care and consideration of the messaging and a deeper understanding of the sacrifice and strength of those who came before us. Now, I'll ask Gina Ford of Agency Landscaping and Planning and Malcolm Davis from Perkins Will to give us the presentation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, county manager, for that introduction and also for your leadership. And thank you, commissioners, for letting us share the update of this incredible project that we're really honored to be part of. This is our incredible team that has been working through the project. My clicker. Ah, there we go. A word of acknowledgement that cultural landscapes can be read in many different ways by different kinds of people. We like to say it's not good or bad, how you read a site, but people bring different things to historic sites. And one of the most interesting things about Lada Place is that there are people that experience it as a place of great natural beauty, and there are others that might see it as a place of great cultural trauma. And both of those are present and create a tension that we consistently navigate on this project. Want to start just by acknowledging the site's context and its history. As many of you know, Lada Place is a historic plantation built in 1800 along the Catawba River. As you can see, this is the remnant of the historic farmstead, including the original Lada House, which is nationally designated, and a series of other support buildings, some of which are replicas, some of which are original to the site, all really intended to provide that glimpse of life from the 19th century. But the Lada House and Lada Place that we experience today is very different from what it would have looked like during its period of significance in the middle of the 1800s. As you can see on the left, Lada Place would have been many hundreds of acres of cultivated land and would have been cleared for such use. The Lada House would occupy the high point of the site, at the kind of very center of the site. And as you can see, in 1978 aerial on the right-hand side, that has changed over time with the growth of the forest, so kind of erasing what would have looked like a very different landscape of cultivation during its period of significance. As we know, many different folks have occupied this land over time, from the indigenous folks who certainly have a heritage here that dates back thousands of years, that include the Catawba, Cherokee, and other Piedmont nations. The landowners who would have come and colonized this land in the 1800s. Many different owners have exchanged this property over time and cultivated this land. And of course, African-Americans and slaved tenant farmers and artisans who were brought to this land to help cultivate it. And as you can see, those all had different periods of significance on this site. We add also another layer of contemporary stewards, from Duke Power, who took over the site in the 1970s, to Mecklenburg County, who have been overseeing the site as a preservation in recent decades. We have gone through a pretty wonderful public process and just wanted to show you some of the highlights of that work. About a year ago, we were here to kick off what we called the grounding event, which was a major public forum. We were guided very much by the Lada Place Partners' core mission, as you can see here, their mission statement around truth, transparency, compassion, transformation, and unity, and that this was an important moment to tell these stories of all of the different people who've occupied and experienced the site in all the different ways that they did. That grounding event included a panel discussion of experts in this kind of space and also activities to gauge from the public what were the key ideas we needed to focus on. And as you can see in this kind of graph, the top three elements, all really focused on, most desired elements the community wanted us to focus on were around the history of slavery at Lada Place. But within that, also wanting to talk about its use as an agricultural space, its also indigenous history. And so we started to get this idea that it was about telling the diverse narratives of the people who had lived on this property. There was a lot of conversation about the de-centering of Lada House, which is a very complicated task because Lada House occupies the high point of the site. It's the only thing that's designated, and it's very visible in its current location. So of course, when you go there, it is the thing you see. Every newspaper article has the Lada House as the headline. But imagine that this is a much broader terrain, where a lot of different people had different exposure to different parts of the land. There was also an interest in paying tribute to the enslaved people of Lada Place. And through our exploration and design work, the idea of getting into the broader landscape, moving away from the house as the only part of the story, kind of broadening the story to include more of the land, there was strong support for the idea of an interpretive trail at Lada Place. We've done lots of different kinds of inquiry over the year-plus we've been working on this project, just to show you a highlight of some of the work that we've undertaken in partnership with the county. We've traveled together to different sites where there have been enslaved histories. We have looked at how those sites operate, how they tell stories today across South Carolina and the Southern United States. We had commissioned a cultural landscape assessment to get a deeper dive into the history beyond the Lada House of this property and learned a lot about how these different populations used the site, the value of the agricultural stories that came out of it, and a lot more about how to think about how we tell the story of enslaved populations on a site like this. We also spent a lot of time walking on the site. As you can see, this is a little hard to read, but it's kind of what I call a treasure map. When you go to Lada Place today, the clearing around the main house gives you a really clear walking path. But to get out into the forest, you start to see remnants of the agricultural landscape, terraces, remnant cedars that align streets, remnant roadbeds, and then remnant views that probably were of high priority of the lake and the river. So as we move into design, we learned from all of those tools and advanced into a concept. The concept here, as you can see, is one, to begin with the visitor center that Malcolm will talk about in a moment, as a portal to the farmstead, which is kind of the historic core of the plantation. But then also a bigger interpretive trail that brings you out into that landscape and gets you into the space where the enslaved populations and the Catawba would have been. And so you can tell more stories about those more diverse peoples, giving multiple loops, multiple ways of understanding the site, and giving visitors either a kind of toe in the water, a medium dive or a deep dive, depending on the amount of time they want to spend on site and how deeply they want to learn. We think an interpretive trail is a really smart way to kind of surface stories. It gives us a bigger terrain. It creates, we hope, all persons trail, so it's accessible to everyone, including school groups, that it would engage the nature preserve and very much build off of the great trail system that exists elsewhere today. And then it could be part of a bigger kind of national movement towards the repositioning of cultural narrative and monument into something that's much more about experience, about storytelling, and about narrative, rather than monuments and buildings. So here is our plan as we have been developing it. You can see the diagram, the visitor center in the lower left, the plantation farmstead improves circulation, connecting the kind of contemporary core of the property, and then a trail that brings you out to a really beautiful promontory in the northeast corner of the property, where you get a great view of the river. And along the journey, we have these different moments of interpretation, from a gateway tribute to a forest stop that talks about the forest and how that's changed over time, to the field to talk about the working and cultivation of this land through enslaved labor and more. And then the river stop, which is more of a place of contemplation. Coming back to the farmstead through the north, stopping by the enslaved folks' cabins in the northeast corner of the property, moving down past the Lada House, past the barn that exists, and back to the visitor center, where we conclude with a tribute where we imagine naming all of the 60-plus folks that were enslaved on this property. As we move through, I'll just show you quickly the stops, starting with this kind of clearing at the Alexander Cabin, a lovely meadow and edge that would be the beginning of the interpretive trail journey. We'll come back to the visitor center in a moment. Here, we imagine building on the great work of artisan and enslaved gentleman Louis Pfeiffer, who worked on this property, building a granite threshold that becomes the entrance to the interpretive trail, incorporating a historic gate on the property into that, really signaling the beginning of the trail journey, planting fruit trees to honor that history, moving across the creek through a pawpaw grove, interpreting the changing forest and how that, kind of how that was cleared through enslaved labor, how it was regrown through the stewardship of Mecklenburg County, through interpretive waysides and seeding, really thinking about this opportunity of crossing a creek and a bridge structure with railings that could become part of that journey of interpretation and storytelling. We are working with an incredible team that did the former interpretive plan, the Design Minds, and they've been starting to visualize each of these stops along the journey and how we could start to tell stories, really making sure to include both the natural and the cultural elements of the site in each stop. As we move along, we come to remnant terraces that would have really shaped the agricultural fields, and so giving a place to pause and recognize that place of labor. These are kind of really simple lines in the forest that show where the original farmfields would have been, and we think we can interpret that and show student groups this kind of hidden history of the site, with a kind of interpretive moment really signaling this enslaved labor, the history of tenant farmers in this plantation, the ongoing efforts to conserve the remnant agricultural terraces. Coming out to the end of the journey, we have this incredible promontory that looks out over the river. As we know, the river was dammed at one point and really flooded a lot of land, including some communities. And so this is an opportunity to talk about that change, too, and the impact to communities along the river. And it's a great moment of prospect, so a quiet place of contemplation, we think, is a great moment for pause at the end of the journey. Again, an opportunity to tell stories about the river and how the river has changed and how that's been shaped by different populations, how it would have been the reason why the Catawba would have settled here. Moving back, we think about the enslaved cabins on the northeast corner of the property and how to make those feel more like an interpretive community, providing seating, shade, interpretive waysides that tell the story of living conditions for the enslaved folks on this property. And we've been looking at other plantations like the Whitney and how they handle such a space, really paving systems and planting systems that support these as domestic settings. And a great opportunity to talk about how communities here found survival and resilience through home and a sense of community. Looping back through the farmstead, different stops along the way that would tell the story of the Lada House itself, the original structures on site, and then moving back down towards the visitor center through one final tribute, which we see is really the final stop of the trail. The tribute, we hope to work with an artist to think about this work. We know that the ASC is currently in the process of selecting an artist with outdoor experience, making spaces of memory and memorial. And so these are just a few examples of what we could imagine this place could be, a tribute that, again, identifies the names and what we know of enslaved folks on this property and spaces of, again, contemplation and reflection. Malcolm?
Good evening, commissioners. We have been working in close partnership with our team, with agency, to really set the new visitor center up as something that departs from the visitor center of its past, as a location that, in many ways, celebrates the intensive craft of enslaved people and others for how they built and how they moved here at this site, the use and employment of wood-mimicking materials, but equality of that through stone and glass and concrete and paving, to really celebrate what we understood to be the workmanship of the people that were here, but to also serve as a proper threshold and gathering location for the experience to be had on this broader site in a way that differs quite greatly and quite dramatically from years past. It's a small plan of some 6,000 or just under 6,000 square feet, designed with a lobby that will serve with interpretive uses of just under 1,000 feet, and a community space that will allow for 75 to 80 guests and visitors to come and have both challenging conversations, but also to be enveloped, in some ways, by the history and taught by the history, and in other cases, be sort of set as the stage to launch into the tours and the experience that Gina has described. We see this as a momentary location, in some cases, to sort of launch into tours. It's a place where folks can come to gather for shade and to organize. The county envisioned school groups coming here to sort of organize and gain new education and new learnings about the experience that they're about to have. But we see it as a multifunctional, multi-dimensional activity zone and space that will help us to both celebrate, gather, but also serve as a respite location for people to gather and heal. A couple of images of the lobby space. We're still working with the Design Minds exhibit design team to develop exactly what those interpretive experience pieces will be within the lobby. We're still evolving as we go into what we call our contract documents phase, just also sort of touch on materials and usage of those materials to warm the space up quite more than what you're seeing. The meeting or gathering space on the backside will be enveloped with lots and lots of natural light, opportunities for people to sort of feel at one with the landscape while also gathering here to, again, intensively involve in conversations and learning experiences. Going back to the master plan, the site is intentional to envelop and engage the building in a way that is harmonious, to encourage people to spend time both inside and outside of the building, but again, to sort of touch these gentle edges of the park and the landscape in a way that sort of helps people to gain perspective, again, on what they'll be seeing through this experience. We're happy, we're moving forward. Gina is going to touch on our schedule, but thank you so much for the time.
So here we are in early 2025. We're in the process, as Malcolm noted, of really becoming much more detailed about design and putting together contract documents, which, as you can see, we hope to have that plus permitting and approvals done by late 2025 to kick off construction, ideally later this year and through next year. And with that, we'll pause on the plan and take your questions and comments. And thank you.
No, thank you for this important update. I know there's a lot of questions and comments on this. I'm going to start with Commissioner Griffin and then go to Commissioner Powell.
Well, first of all, let me thank you. I think I sat on the selection committee, and we had a lot of conversations about the possibilities for this site. We walked around for a little while, and I am just, I'm just thoroughly impressed with the work and the attention to detail and your efforts to visit other historical sites to gain insight. But beyond that, what you just mentioned in terms of a tribute to the inhabitants of that site across the spectrum and their contributions being considered and represented on that site, I'm just sitting here in awe. And Dina, you said you won't be here when this thing is through, but you're going to be in Charlotte. You absolutely got to be there for the ribbon cutting. You know, I don't say too many things that excite me, but this really, this is really great stuff. And just to have that conversation, and I was sitting beside Dr. Johnson, I think, at this review process, you took into consideration all of the comments and conversations and input from a very diverse audience and have figured out from your presentation how to represent the various audiences. And I like the way you presented earlier. It's not, this is right and this is wrong. It's how to reflect history on this site in an appropriate and sensitive way. And I can't wait, Mr. Chairman, and Dina, to visit this. I usually don't participate from beginning to end. This is one project that I would have participated from the very beginning to the end. So thank you for your work, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me a chance to make some comments.
Absolutely. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. So I'm going to be there from the beginning to the end, too. A couple of things. I agree with everything that Commissioner Griffin said. This really reflects all the voices, or, you know, many. I guess you can't reflect all voices and everything, but this reflects many of the voices. everything, but this reflects many of the voices. And there's been a wholehearted commitment from the top down, from, you know, like, we work really closely with the county manager, and from the beginning, she was wholeheartedly committed to not making it a placeholder of the past, and everyone involved in the team of telling truth, and all of the priorities that were coming from the community. And so I love when Chairman Jarrell said, you know, we need to be mindful of how our words fall because there's so much good here. But, you know, there's so many great things, and I love that we're having a good community space because that was something that was really important to the community, and I just want to make sure it's big enough. The one thing that I am very concerned about going forward is the amount of impervious in a nature preserve. And so I heard a comment from an advisory board member who said, you know, when you look at this, one of the last slides, it looks like a landing strip for a small aircraft. And I thought, I don't know how much impervious that is. So as we move forward, you know, making sure that we work really closely with Park and Rec staff to make sure we don't put more impervious than we have to, and, you know, everything that comes with infrastructure, it's a nature preserve. So if sewer infrastructure is required, doing that with the least impact in a nature preserve. And so those are, I love this. I'm thankful for this. I think it's going to be awesome, but please keep that in mind as we move forward in the construction process. Because I am here all the time, like, I'm here at least two or three times a week, walking the property, and I've never seen the pawpaws. So I'm excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go with Commissioner Townsend Ingram, then Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
I just think it's an awesome project. It's in my side of town, and I always talk about the West Side and District Two and having some amenities there for the community. So I'm very much looking forward to touring this and taking it all in. Thank you all so much for your work and your dedication to it.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think we've certainly come a long way from, I don't remember what year it was.
2021.
Was it 2021? Gosh, time flies when you're having fun. Yeah, this, I really am proud of how the county has tackled this, and Deana, I really want to, you know, commend you for how you structured this and, you know, put it together and how you invited in the public and how you actually invited different groups that needed to be heard and represented. And I just was so impressed with the process in this, so I really want to emphasize that. However, I also want to, you know, sort of back up Commissioner Powell's comments around the environment and making sure that we try to have as small a footprint of destruction as possible because it really is a balancing act trying to get this right in a nature preserve. So I'm really excited about the project. I think my favorite part is the etched images on glass. That seems so cool. I can't wait to see that. And so I just want to thank everyone involved, especially also Deputy County Manager Johnson. I know she had a very big role in this, and I know there's a lot of people that we haven't named who were essential to this. So thank you to everyone who had a hand in making this, something that the whole entire county and even the state can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go with Commissioner Meyer, then Commissioner Leake.
Thank you. First, I want to also say thank you to staff, Dina, your whole team, and Leslie Johnson. Thank you, because, you know, that was a really low point, and I just had come on the board, and it was a big controversy, and you really took it and turned it into something positive because this is beautiful. And I think it just exudes respect for the people that inhabited the land. And also, I think it does pay tribute to the land itself. And so I love the overlooks, and I love the explanations about, you know, what they used the land for and how they used it and how the land helped them, and I think, and how it's changed over time. I also think it's a big tribute to the county for what we've done with the land, and we preserved the land. So I agree with Commissioner Powell. I do hope that we can keep it a preserve as it is, but it's beautiful, and thank you, everyone, for your work.
Thank you. Commissioner Leake, you were going to pass, or did you have something?
I just want to say it's going to bring economic growth to that area. It will change the image of the area as it relates to its present image, and that will add to Mecklenburg County and its contribution to that period of our life as a people in Mecklenburg County. So I just want to thank the committee for its work in trying to revitalize an area that would soon be forgotten. But it can be a point where the nation will come here to see it as it relates to economics and family, children. So that's pretty much what I want to say about it. I think it would be great for a family education of who they are and where they came from, and all of us. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll go with Commissioner Dunlap, and then Commissioner Altman.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank Dina and her staff for what I call a heroic effort. For those people who were in our community at the time, the big ruh-rah about what was going on on the site presented an opportunity for us to do this and to get it right. And I'm just delighted to see what has progressed and what is being proposed for that site. One thing I want to say is, having viewed the plans, knowing that Mecklenburg County takes seriously its effort to make opportunities available for those who are disabled, I want to make sure that we have our vehicles on this site so that people can truly explore the site. And I know Dr. Johnson is going to make sure that happens. And then I want to say to Dr. Johnson, because when I first got these proposed plans, first word I saw was the word plantation, and I picked up the phone. I thought we voted to remove the word plantation from all of our properties. And Dr. Johnson, in her quiet way, said, now, if we're going to truly reflect history, it was a part of history. And I really respected that. That meant a lot. And so I am happy that we are going to, as Commissioner Griffin said, reflect history as it was. And so I'm thankful that we're at that point. Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Altman. I'll come back to you as soon as Commissioner Altman.
I just, I really appreciate what Commissioner Dunlap has just said. I think that when you, as a community, handle something of such sensitivity and such pain, the reverberations of which are 100% still with us today in so many ways, the work still so undone, that it's really like a holy endeavor to do it justice, to do it with the care, and especially when telling the truth seems to be under assault everywhere, it really feels like we're in a haven, that under the leadership of Dr. Johnson and Dina and all your hard work and all the community stakeholders, we're going to really do this in a sensitive and beautiful way that will bring, dignify what happened and ensure that everybody continues to be educated about what occurred and how it still is a part of the legacy we have to combat. So thank you.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. It is important to thank everyone, and I want to make sure I thank Dr. Johnson, but I also want to say that Lee Jones was so strong in this moment. You know, it was international news, what was happening at Lada, and it was, I mean, we were all getting overwhelmed by media. And I worked with Lee Jones for many years, and I just want to say, it was just his strongest moment. He was unyielding, like, it cannot continue. And I want to say that out loud because it was, I think that was really important, and I think that energy, like, Dina felt it. And it just was handled so extremely well. It could have gone really bad, and it just, it was handled very well. So, thank you.
I just want to briefly say thank you, Commissioner Dunlap, for reminding me. I'm so, first of all, something you all should know about me, it's a good thing I'm at large because I'm so directionally challenged. I thought it was in District Two. It's close enough to District Two that I thought it was in my district, District Two on the West Side, but thank you for reminding me that it's not the West Side.
But it's close enough.
It's close enough. I still want some stuff on the West Side.
I think most people do think it's District Two, actually. Let me just say a couple of things. One, thank you all for the presentation. I appreciate the work. I appreciate all the comments made by my colleagues. They've said it very well. There are a couple of things that I want to add. Certainly, a thank you to Dina for the leadership around this. This was, to Commissioner Powell's point, this was a really rocky incident that, you know, I remember like it was yesterday, and it was not fun. But it's always interesting how you can have a tough circumstance turn into something just beautiful. I'm blown away by what I see. I really am. I'm just blown away by it. I think it is just fantastic on so many levels, and I won't go into each and every one of them, and certainly thank Dina for her leadership. Like I said, I want to double down on what Commissioner Dunlap said with lifting up Dr. Johnson, because I think, particularly when we're dealing with issues of waste that are tied to very, very difficult historical tragedies and sins of the past, i.e. slavery, and the way folks have been treated in this country, for an African-American leader to have to navigate this is, it can be a burden because you don't know how it will land, and you are the one in the room that is supposed to be speaking for everyone. And, you know, there, it's very difficult to understand the weight that comes with that, the heaviness and the weightiness, and the ability to have to think through it and then also speak to it. And so, Dr. Johnson, I just wanted to make sure that I lifted up that particular aspect of what you had to try, what I assume you had to navigate, which was not always, I'm sure, not an easy lift. And I wanted to publicly just say thank you, and to your entire team, but to you, and I know you're going to say a team effort, and you always do that, and I know it. But you also know that I also believe that leadership matters, and those who are, serve underneath certain leaders, they get their cues from their leaders. And so that's why I wanted to lift up you, and I wanted to lift up Dina as well. So thank you for that. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the next item on our manager's report is a briefing from Medic. Medic has been talking to us about their current performance, their resource needs, what their vision is for the future, and talks a little bit about an update on the current status of fire department contracts. And I'm going to ask JP Peterson, our Director of Medic, Executive Director, to come to the podium and make the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you all are doing well this evening. My name is, let's make sure this is up there. Good, okay. My name is John Peterson. I go by JP, and I'm the Executive Director here at Medic, your EMS provider. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight regarding these important topics. I have two major topics that I would like to discuss this evening. The first is an update on Medic's performance and steps we have taken since COVID to mitigate the challenges we've been facing on many fronts. This includes ongoing work that will ultimately shape the vision I have for Medic's future and an overview of the resources we need to get there. The second topic is an update on our continued contract discussions with fire departments here in Mecklenburg County. First, I'd like to start with a little bit of recent history. I joined Medic in late 2021, still in the throes of the pandemic. As we all know, COVID took a profound toll on healthcare workers everywhere, especially those in EMS. Our employees were burnt out from working overtime to take care of our community and also dealing with the risk of exposure to both themselves and their families. Long story short, these factors unfortunately led to a large exodus in EMS nationwide, which Medic was not immune to. Fast forward to 2022, and Medic was facing the worst staffing shortage any of us had ever seen. Thankfully, we had tremendous support from this board and from our county manager, who approved and funded programs to help us create new career pathways for EMTs and paramedics. Since implementation, we have had remarkable success.
Can you please say next slide, and then we'll take care of it up here?
Next slide? Okay, it's not working. Okay. So there we go. All right, thank you. So the programs we put in place resulted in 89 new EMTs joining the agency, many of whom were paid to obtain their EMT certification. Another 24 individuals who worked an essential role as operations support technicians managing supplies and medication stock in our ambulances were able to pursue their EMT credentials while still working a full-time job. As a result of our successful EMT recruitment, we were also able to create a paramedic pathway program, sending 28 current EMTs to an accelerated paramedic school full-time and fully paid. These students will graduate and rejoin Medic as paramedics later this year. Through these efforts, we have now reached our budgeted headcount for fiscal year '25, which is a significant achievement. Next slide, please. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel for staffing, which is a great thing. However, we are now seeing more need for Medic than we have ever seen before. So far, this fiscal year alone, we have had a 7% call volume growth over this, just this year, which is over 10,000 new calls for service. This chart illustrates how this increased workload impacts the agency overall. The red line represents how many 911 calls Medic responded to by fiscal year. The blue line represents the total number of ambulances that responded to these calls, since some situations require more than one ambulance. The main takeaway here is simply that Medic is being relied upon more than ever, and there are no signs of that growth slowing down. While Medic's staffing is back to budgeted headcount levels for the first time in four years, call volume growth has surpassed our response capabilities, causing Medic to be under-resourced despite being technically fully staffed. We must continue increasing our resources so that we can better respond when and where we are needed in this community. While working to increase staffing, we have also taken other steps to mitigate the challenges we experienced coming out of COVID. Next slide, please. In April of 2023, we redesigned our response configuration to better align our responses with patient condition. This both promoted a faster response for our sickest patients and reduced the use of lights and sirens, which also reduces risk to our employees and others on the roadways. To create a more efficient system where EMTs and paramedics are dispatched to calls appropriate for their credential levels, we made the critical decision to triage and prioritize patients experiencing a life-threatening emergency. Our mission at Medic is to save a life, hold a hand, and be prepared to respond when and where we are needed in our community. We hold the responsibility of saving lives within this community at the center of what We hold the responsibility of saving lives within this community at the center of what we do. Placing that at the center of our response configuration redesign allowed us to remain focused despite managing a system through a long-term staffing crisis. We came back to this board last April with an update and I wanted to take the time here to once again show you that we continue to achieve the outcomes we put forth when the changes were made. Since implementation, the following outcomes have sustained, including: No adverse impact to clinical performance. Improved resource alignment based on patient condition. A reduction of lights and sirens responses by sixty-four percent. Reduction in ambulance crashes by fifteen percent. And a reduction of first responder EMS call volume by sixteen percent countywide. Next slide, please. Through all of this, we never lost sight of our clinical outcomes. This slide highlights patient conditions where our pre-hospital interventions are most critical. Our performance in each of these measures has improved since the implementation of our new response configuration. They also outpace established industry standards for EMS providers. Listed in the last column, I would like to take a second to speak to one measure in particular, which is our success at treating cardiac arrest patients. These are the sickest of the sick patients that we see. Patient outcomes in Mecklenburg County for those experiencing sudden cardiac arrests are widely acknowledged as being among some of the very best in EMS, period. This success is a direct result of focused improvement and well-trained and committed providers from both Medic and our first responder partners, without whom we could not achieve the same level of success. We are, we aren't just excelling clinically. On the left side of the slide, you can see what Medic's patients say about the care they receive from us. In 2024, eighty-five percent of patients surveyed by an independent company rated the overall care they received from Medic as very good or excellent. All in all, the work we have done with staffing and changing how we respond to calls has clearly helped the organization maintain the high clinical performance standards this agency has been known for. Looking beyond our clinical formance, performance, I want to now change our focus to response times, which is an area where there is still work that needs to be done. Next slide, please. So how exactly does Medic report and track response times? It's a bit complicated, so please bear with me as I try to demystify things. Medic is a joint government agency that operates under the specifications set forth by its contract with Mecklenburg County. This document dates back to the mid nineteen nineties and for reasons I don't have, the targets for response compliance were never updated. The way the contract is written, Medic is expected to respond to the highest priority calls in less than ten minutes and fifty-nine seconds, with the caveat that certain circumstances outside of Medic's control direct the agency to exclude calls from the final calculation. This includes times when the agency is experiencing high call volume or significant weather events. We call these instances exemption and these are fairly standard practice in EMS. Every agency I've worked for has had these type of exemptions. While that represents our externally reported performance, internally, we monitor raw compliance, which does not include exemptions, but does take into account changes in patient condition prior to Medic arrival. Medic leadership currently focuses on raw compliance in our day-to-day work, including the way we build our staffing and scheduling. In addition to being a more accurate representation of what our patients feel, it also enables us to more clearly see where the need for improvement exists. Next slide, please. Mecklenburg County is experiencing a significant population growth that is resulting in an increase in need for Medic resources. Traffic patterns have clearly changed and the amount of congestion on our roads, particularly the main thoroughfares, is at times suffocating. When coupled with Medic's staffing challenges, it has made our ability to respond timely and consistently to all parts of the county exceptionally difficult. This table reflects Medic's response time compliance for our sickest patients in 2024. Looking at the first column, you can see the current zone breakdown. Medic tracks response times by north, central, and south zones, in addition to countywide. These zones and targets also date back to the nineteen nineties. The second column shows the targeted compliance percentage for each zone. Medic is expected to arrive to eighty-five percent of high priority calls within ten minutes and fifty-nine seconds in each zone and ninety percent countywide. Now I would ask you to look at the far right column. As you can see, we are far exceeding contract compliance targets across the board. So what's the problem? The problem is that our patients don't feel our contract compliance. They feel raw compliance. If you look at the raw compliance column, you will notice that raw compliance countywide is eighty-one percent despite contract compliance being ninety-eight percent. This discrepancy has been exacerbated over at least the last five years because of the pandemic and related challenges we are seeing today that I've already described. It is clear that the current process is outdated and needs to be improved. We began working with our board and the county last year to develop a reporting structure that is more transparent and easier to understand. If approved and funded, this work will drastically improve Medic's ability to serve this community. Next slide, please. This table shows average response times by zone for two different timeframes, May through December 2023, which reflects the first seven months after the response configuration changes were made, as well as calendar year 2024. You'll see that following response configuration, our average Priority One response time countywide was nine minutes and nineteen seconds, with a slight variation across the three zones. Our performance improved in calendar year 2024 by about thirty seconds countywide and across the zones. These improvements are a result of continued targeted efforts on hiring and maximizing the efficiency and effectiveness of our resources, some of which are listed on the left of this slide. Though we are proud of this improvement, we continue to seek out opportunities to fine-tune our deployment strategies to consistently maintain performance for this community. In order to realize reliable improvement, though, we must increase the resources available to this agency to further close the gap between current performance and our intended targets. Next slide, please. Medic's fiscal year 26 budget request is built to address our response time concerns. Medic needs to add fifty EMTs and eight telecommunicators to better handle the increased volume of calls for service coming to Medic. I am pleased to report that Medic is able to fund these positions through predicted revenue growth related to our call volume increases. Medic is requesting one-time funding from the county to purchase ten ambulances to increase the size of our fleet. These are resources our system desperately needs as we have maxed out our deployment capabilities with the resources currently on hand today. Next slide, please. So what will this buy? Approving Medic's budget and submitting, as submitted, would improve EMS system coverage by increasing the number of staffed ambulances available to respond for requests for service in our community every day. By better aligning our resource availability with the demand for services, we expect improved response times and ability to flex our resources to accommodate sudden changes in demand. Next slide, please. As we discuss the needed improvements to Medic's system, I would be remiss to not share with you all of the work my team and I have been doing to redesign our zone structure. This is a map of Mecklenburg County broken down by the three zones Medic currently uses to track response compliance. These don't, these zones date back to the nineteen nineties and were largely based on the county's population distribution at the time. The heart icons you see dotted around the county represent the location of current hospitals in blue and freestanding emergency departments in red. Next slide, please. Here, we see what raw response time compliance looks like for our highest priority calls broken out by the three current zones for calendar year 2024. While at a zone-wide level, this variation may be acceptable, we can't help but ask ourselves, is Medic's performance equitable throughout the various parts of the county? This highlights the primary issue with this method of tracking. The zones are too large to fully appreciate our performance and identify targeted areas of improvement. It is for these reasons that Medic has been working on expanding the number of zones used to track compliance to better manage the EMS system in the county. Next slide, please. A team was asked, tasked with identifying the best way to track and report response times by zone. Following months of work and more than twelve iterations, along with feedback from our fire chiefs, we arrived at an eight-zone map. Instead of simply taking the logic of our existing zones map and looking only at population, the team pulled in landscape and demographic characteristics, as well as Medic-specific data on responses and transports. The most critical variables considered in the final version included our highway structure and how that contributes to access, zone size by square miles, and population, as well as demand for Medic's resources. Practically and statistically, this map represents significantly improved equity across these key variables. These zones also fully contain each of the towns into single zones and provide Medic with enough detail to highlight and address individual performance inconsistencies. With the framework for evaluating response zones now built, we are prepared to reevaluate and redesign this map as our community continues to grow and as needs change. This work was recently presented to our Agency Board of Commissioners and, when operationalized, will allow us to better appreciate our performance in all corners of the county. Next slide, please. This map overlays our compliance for calendar year 2024 over the proposed new zone map. As you can see, this map tells a much clearer story about where our opportunities are than the current three-zone configuration. You can see the effect of population density and access on response compliance, a challenge we are seeking to address with this year's budget request. With the additional resources requested, geographical barriers become smaller hurdles to overcome in this environment. Work remains with our board to determine the goals associated with these zones. However, we anticipate that full-scale implementation of and compliance within this zone, new zone configuration, will result in a multi-year ask to effectively right-size Medic's resources to meet the demands of the system. Next slide, please. With FY26 budget approval, Medic will continue our aggressive recruitment efforts to quickly hire fifty additional EMTs. We will also begin the process of procuring vehicle chassis and fabricating ambulances to increase the size of our fleet. This work will take several months to complete and incremental gains should be felt in the system as we go. However, to reiterate, it is important to understand that our fiscal year 26 budget request is based on today's system needs and the current zone reporting structure. It will not fully address today's system needs and the, uh, it will not fully address raw compliance results or the proposed zone improvements. Should the new zones and response time reporting measures be approved and implemented, this will require additional growth for Medic to be successful. It is our intention to do this over a multi-year period in partnership with the county. Next slide, please. Next slide. I would now like to switch our attention to the current status of discussions between Medic and our first responder partners in the community. Area fire departments have served as an integral part of Mecklenburg County EMS system for many years. Their role as first responders is critical to our overall system design and performance. Most firefighters with each fire department are credentialed EMTs, which enables them to respond and treat patients experiencing certain types of conditions. Data we have collected shows that sixty-four percent of all calls our fire departments respond to are medical calls as first responders. Ironically, this correlates precisely with national averages. Some calls we send them to are very low acuity in nature, meaning it has been determined by our certified emergency medical dispatchers that the patient is not experiencing a life-threatening emergency. The benefit here is that many of these patients end up refusing transport and our first responders can actually prevent an unnecessary ambulance response. Other calls are of the most serious nature, like sudden cardiac arrests, where the role of our first responders play in our care protocol is essential. In either case, their role in our EMS system is critical and we value their partnership immensely. Next slide, please. Speaking specifically to the contracts themselves, they date back to the mid nineteen nineties and, to the best of my knowledge, were put into place to memorialize an agreement for first responders to participate in the EMS system as first responders and pay a subsidy to compensate them for the services provided. As I understand it, when these contracts were created, most county fire departments were volunteer-based and did not have revenue sources or taxing authority. The contracts memorialized the level of funding support for each fire department, including medical supplies and equipment, which is passed through Medic. The contracts also outline the responsibilities of fire departments as they participate in the EMS system as first responders. For context, on a state level, after speaking with multiple EMS chiefs in other North Carolina counties and according to the North Carolina Office of EMS, Mecklenburg is the only county in North Carolina in which the EMS agency has contracts of this nature with fire departments. Mecklenburg is also the only county in the state that we are aware of that provides a subsidy to fire departments for first responder services. Next slide, please. The Charlotte Fire Department currently receives a flat subsidy of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand thirty-five dollars paid in monthly installments. The town fire departments currently receive one thousand twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents flat rate per month and twenty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents per call, which equates to about three hundred and ninety-four thousand combined estimated for fiscal year 2025. While Medic does have first responder agreements with the volunteer ETJ fire departments, they are now funded through Luisa. Next slide, please. Charlotte Fire Department, Huntersville Fire Department, and Cornelius Fire Department have given Medic one hundred and eighty days' notice that they wish to terminate their contracts with Medic in order to renegotiate terms. We have held multiple meetings with most of the fire chiefs, in addition to meeting with the town managers to discuss issues they are looking to address through this process. To be clear, each of the departments continue to function in the EMS system as one would expect. We have been active collaborators and are fully supportive of making any positive changes for the EMS system as a whole, so long as those changes are something in the best interest of patient care and that they are things we are capable of fulfilling. Next slide, please. Town leaders have made a handful of requests. Some are shared by all and others are town-specific. Improvement of Medic's staffing levels are a consistent theme as we have been very upfront about our staffing challenges coming out of COVID. Response time reporting by town is another consistent request we receive from town leaders. We do not currently track response times by town as that is not the level of service granularity that Medic is designed or funded to provide. In our meeting with the towns on April ninth, April ninth, there was a strong desire for Medic to report response times by zip code in addition to the new proposed zones and countywide response time tracking. We will bring this request to our board for consideration as we work this year to improve how Medic tracks and reports response times. One of the more specific town requests we received is from the three northern towns, Huntersville, Davidson, and Cornelius. These three towns are seeking to have at least two dedicated ambulances placed in their communities for response to their community members. We have made it very clear that dedicated unit placement along these lines does not align with. align with Medic's dynamic deployment model. The issues they are trying to address relative to response times are certainly something Medic is working on. However, we do not believe this is the proper solution to the problem. Continuing to increase our staffing levels, our fleet size, and completing our work on the response zone changes we are recommending is where we need to focus our resources at this time. We can take stock of the impact on all of our communities and decide what additional interventions may be prudent once that work is complete. Next slide, please. Hearing directly from the fire chiefs, they have interest in seeing additional changes to operational protocols that were put in place during our response configuration change process. Specifically, the chiefs would like the ability to stop responding to low-acuity EMS calls during major fire-related incidents or severe weather. Medic is already working with CFD to create a standard operating procedure for this that could be used countywide. They would also like to see a significant reduction or elimination of the low-acuity EMS calls that they respond to overall. As a reminder, we reduced first responder EMS responses by 16% countywide through the response configuration changes. The medical director also created a state-approved protocol to allow first responders to go available on scene of certain low-acuity calls with patient permission, so that they can be available for higher priority calls while waiting for the ambulance to arrive. Many departments have stated to me that they are uncomfortable with this protocol and choose not to use it. There have been numerous concerns voiced by fire departments regarding low-acuity responses, as they are often on-scene longer while awaiting an ambulance to arrive on these calls. Using first responders to respond to low-acuity calls enables ambulances to remain in position to respond quickly to life-threatening emergencies. While this clearly benefits Medic, the fire department concerns about their units being tied up on low-acuity calls is real. As it stands today, when a citizen calls 911 and requests EMS, the only option is to send either an ambulance, or a fire truck, or both. Someone has to respond. Considering that there are approximately 300 fire apparatus in the county compared to 72 Medic ambulances, our fire department partners are currently positioned best to handle low-acuity calls in order to preserve limited ambulance resources. However, with that said, Medic is studying the potential use of alternative response units that could eliminate the need to send a fire truck on these calls. This idea is that it would be EMS personnel in an SUV that would respond in place of the fire department. Medic has performed a series of small-scale testing back in January that revealed ARUs would require significant initial and ongoing cost. Further testing is necessary to understand the cost versus benefit of these units. All of the towns and the Charlotte Fire Department have articulated a need for additional subsidy. So far, we have only received specific subsidy increase requests from CFD and Huntersville. CFD is requesting to receive the same per-call subsidy as the towns in an effort to make the subsidy what they consider to be more equitable. This would increase their annual subsidy from $500,000 to $1.8 million. However, as I understand it, CFD also has a desire for their subsidy to eventually reach $10 million annually, based on their estimated cost to provide first responder services. The Huntersville Fire Department is seeking for the county to fully fund their cost to provide first responder services. This would increase their subsidy from $106,000 annually to $1.6 million annually. When presented with these requests, I did ask CFD what enhancements they would provide to the EMS system if we were able to increase their subsidy. The answer I received was that there would be no enhancements. Rather, this funding would go directly to the city's general fund. Next slide, please. As I have mentioned, our first responder partners are an integral part of the EMS system, and it is my desire, strong desire, to work with them to find mutually acceptable solutions to their concerns that are also in the best interest of our patients. The contract termination requests we received from the city and two towns called these first responder contracts and subsidy into question. This resulted in extensive research on North Carolina EMS systems and multiple discussions between Medic, Medic's board, and the county to ensure that there was a mutual understanding regarding the requirements surrounding first responder contracts and subsidy. What we have learned from this research is that neither the county nor Medic have an obligation to fund first responder services outside of the current first responder contract agreement. Also, Medic is not required to have contracts with fire departments for them to provide first responder services in the county. The State Office of EMS has confirmed this in writing. While Medic generates its own revenue through fees for service, it has never generated enough revenue to sustain on its own without assistance from county subsidy. Medic could utilize some of its revenue that it generates to provide subsidy to first responders. However, that revenue would have to come out of Medic's operating budget. This would result in Medic decreasing funding that is used for operational costs to provide ambulance service, which would ultimately end up with Medic requesting additional subsidy from the county to fill the gap. Medic does not have taxing authority, and we are not able to carry fund balance. The only way Medic could increase its revenue is to increase its fees for service. It would not be appropriate for me to do so in order to subsidize municipal fire departments that have their own taxing authority or other funding mechanisms. The funding that Medic receives from the county is ultimately decided by the county manager and this board of county commissioners. So where do we go from here? We will need to determine funding direction from the county on Medic's budget. Next, we will have to evaluate any potential impacts from that funding decision as it relates to first responder contracts. Then, please know that we are committed to continue to collaborate with our fire departments on the go-forward. Whatever direction we go in regarding first responder contracts, our priority is to ensure that we provide the best possible EMS care and service delivery to all of Mecklenburg County. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide this presentation this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, JP. Appreciate that. A couple of things before I open up to my colleagues. One, let me take an opportunity to acknowledge the first responders that are here. I'd like you all to please stand so that we can acknowledge you, recognize you. So we certainly appreciate you all being here, and we appreciate the work that's being done, where you all are putting your lives on the line for us on a daily basis. So thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Colleagues, one of the things, this was a lot. It was a lot. There's a lot to unpack.
That's right.
And we're going to go slow. We're not rushing to the door, so we'll be very clear about that. We're going to keep the normal time limit. But I know there are folks that have been in communication with the towns and certain constituencies around this. I know we have, obviously, at-large commissioners who have been receiving emails, and I want everyone to use this as an opportunity to gain clarification and to put questions out there now to be addressed in this particular setting. So most likely, those that need it will do two rounds. So keep that in mind as we go on, and if there's more that's needed, we'll do that as well. So I am going to start with Commissioner Altman first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, JP. Thank you to all of our first responders. My father came to visit me here in Mecklenburg County, and while babysitting, my three unruly children had a massive heart attack and ended up having to be transported for emergency triple bypass. So this hits home, as I know it does for everybody in the community. I, so I'm going to need to watch this whole presentation again, talk to community stakeholders, and ask a lot of follow-up questions, because it's a lot to try to understand on a first run. So I'm not going to be making any pronouncements about where I stand, except to say, obviously, that it's very important that, I mean, it's a first-order obligation that government deliver emergency services, so that, you know, we don't let anyone fall through the cracks. And I'm not sure how we're going to get there. I hear a lot of disagreement, but I'm confident that maybe not tonight, but over the next couple of days and weeks, that we're going to get there. And I'm committed to that with all of my partners in the community, in the north, in the south, and throughout the county. So is your basic argument that the county should not, and I guess I'll direct this to the manager also, because I really just, I'm still trying to understand, that the county should not be providing, sending money to the towns, because the towns are already having in place fire departments that don't have to be out on fire calls all that frequently? And they have the same skill set to do the initial emergency response, and so it's not an extra cost to them, because they already have these fire departments in place, to provide this first level of response? And if a higher medical response is needed, then Medic, which is much smaller, can follow behind? Is that the basic argument, Dina?
Yes, I think that's the basic argument. Municipal fire departments, not only here in Mecklenburg County, but across the country, first responder responsibilities is what they do, in addition to fighting fires, but a large part of what they do, and the data bore that out, 64% of their calls are first responder calls, and the taxpayers in the city of Charlotte and the six towns are already paying taxes for that service.
So they would be, what I'm hearing from you, mostly underutilized throughout their day if they only responded to fire?
That's correct.
Okay. And so since they're being paid for a full day of work, and they're not being called but to work for a small part of the day for fire, it allows them to provide the service that the taxpayers already paid for, for no additional cost? Is that right?
Yes.
And your argument is that the county should not be sending money for them already being paid to do that service?
That's my position.
Okay. And what I further understand from you is that, or the presentation, is that Mecklenburg, oh.
Keep going.
I'll just, is Mecklenburg County is the only county in North Carolina that has been paying the subsidy that you no longer think the county should pay? Is that right?
That's correct. Based on the research that JP has done, we are the only county in North Carolina that is providing a subsidy to municipal fire departments.
Okay. I will save for second round, and thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go with Commissioner Meyer, then Commissioner Dunlap.
Oh, thank you. It is a lot, and I appreciate that summary, Lee. What's the fire department's stand on this? Where are they on this?
They believe that the county should be paying them to provide first responder services.
Okay. And JP, first of all, thank you. You're so responsive when I email you with my own constituent issues, and you always handle it beautifully, because I always hear back, and they're just so happy. So thank you. When you said, "They, people feel the raw compliance and not the contract compliance" back earlier in Priority One, do you mean they feel like they're not, they're not getting attention?
It's the true reflection of our responses in the community, right? We know that 81% of the time, we're on time, but we're reporting that we're on time 98% of the time.
Say that one more time.
81% of the time, raw compliance, we're on time. That's what the real feel is to the patients, right? And that's what our, that's what our fire department partners feel as far as our on-time reliability, that's what the patients feel. But the way that the contract is set up in our reporting mechanism with the exemptions that we receive, we report that we're 98% compliant.
Okay.
It's hard for me to tell you I have a problem when I'm telling you we're 98% compliant.
Okay. I understand. Thank you for explaining that. I wasn't sure. I also want to watch this again. I do appreciate hearing what Dina just said. I do support more ambulances. I hope that we can find that for you. I know how important that is. And that's all for right now. I might come back.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go with Commissioner Dunlap, then Commissioner Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For those of you who weren't around, and I think there's probably only two of us, board members who are around, and I know there are several staff people who are around, it reminds me of the situation we had with Carolina's health care. Mecklenburg County was paying Carolina's health care $40 million a year to serve indigent patients. Mecklenburg County was the only county who paid Carolina's health care for indigent patients when Carolina's health care provided health care for indigent patients in all the other counties. And so Harry Jones was the manager at that time, and believe it or not, he hired Dan Bishop to take Carolina's health care to court and sued them to get out from under the contract. And Mecklenburg County won for the very same reason that is being presented here tonight. And so I am not an attorney. I believe, based on the information of the past, that if this situation were to go to court, Mecklenburg County would probably prevail in that incident. Given that situation, I've got a couple of questions. With the funds that are currently being paid for the services that are provided by the fire departments, what is the increase that they're seeking?
So as far as the overall percentage increase?
Yeah.
So they're...
Dollar-wise, yes, estimate.
Yes. Well, dollar-wise, the Charlotte Fire Department is seeking to go from a $500,000 subsidy to a $1.8 million subsidy. And the Huntersville Fire Department is seeking to go from a $106,000 subsidy to a $1.6 million subsidy. The percentages are something like 256% increase for CFD and about a 1,400% increase for Huntersville. And those are, there is a desire that I have heard from all of the towns to have an increase in subsidy. These are the only two that I know that have actually asked us for a specific number, so far.
I guess I need a second round.
We'll go to the second round. Commissioner, Commissioner Powell, then Commissioner Leek.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It is a lot. And I do know Davidson didn't ask for more.
They have not yet.
So they just wanted to remain the same. I really appreciate you going over the raw compliance versus contract compliance, because there is a lot of heartburn, like, you know, frustration, and people thinking it's book cookery when they hear the contract compliance versus what is truly happening. I really appreciate you adding more zones, and hopefully, like, getting to what everybody needs to understand. But when you look at District One, it's what we feel. Like, when you look at that 68%, and then down more to the right of North Charlotte, and you look at that low number, it's what we feel. And so while it might not be in your recommendation yet, I don't think that the north or myself are going to back down on dedicated ambulances in the north. I was just in a meeting with CNPD for two and a half hours, where we talked about how difficult it is for them, because the geography of that whole area is so massive. And so I think that your EMTs and paramedics and you feel the same as I'm expressing, that you want to get there, we need you there, and how do we set it up so that you are there? Because right now, we feel the pain of not having the resources on time. And so that's a question, you know, how, how can we get dedicated ambulance service because we need it? And how do we decrease Medic hold time for the fire department? Because that seems to be a big issue. So if you could answer that for now.
Sure. So a couple of things on that. The first, with regard to dedicated units. So as I mentioned before, that's not something we recommend, because that's outside of our system status plan. To elaborate on that a little more, and to the second piece of that, we just have proposed, we've done all this work to... we've done all this work to propose new zones. I really think that we should increase medic in our fleet size and our, and our personnel to meet those response times in those zones first, and see how that impacts, right? If we do that work first and complete that, then we can look and see, do we still have a problem that we might need to consider a dedicated unit? Or some other option, like maybe a deployment center further north, or something like that? There are other options and ways for us to look at this. I think our first priority is to finish the work that we've already started, get medic built to beat that. Because as you saw in the response times of the new zones, if we turn that on today, we would not be successful. And that's going to take us time to be able to get to that. You know, and, and it does come down to two dollars, because in ambulances, that's sitting idle, and that's not generating, or not running calls, is not generating revenue. So there's a significant cost to that. That's obviously something that would have to be discussed on the go-forward. If that's the right thing that this board and the county want us to do, then of course, we would look at that. And then on your second piece, remind me, I'm sorry.
How do you decrease medic hold time?
Decrease medic hold time. So there, there's a couple of things with that. So our team has done what I'll call a deep dive into our response reconfiguration. They have looked at every single different response determinant. If you remember, there's, you may, maybe not remember, but there's 2,200 or so response determinants. These are all the different types of response determinants that can happen, based on the information we receive from a caller who calls 911. It helps us determine what the right resource is to send. One of the things that we identified is there's an opportunity for us to reduce first responder-only responses significantly, like around 32% or so countywide. That is something that is an opportunity to, that would significantly reduce the fire department wait times. But there's something that I think is equally, if not even more, important. And that is something that is called the Advanced Send Protocol. So the Advanced Send Protocol is specifically geared towards police departments, and how police departments can better communicate with medic so that we understand what they're seeing and dealing with, and what they need. Most of those first responder-only calls, which I think are really kind of the crux of the issue with sending the fire department out first without a medic, and then the fire department gets there and determines, yeah, we need a medic, and then they got to wait for a medic, right? If we can, number one, reduce the number of times that they're going out there without medic, that's piece number one, and we believe we can do that. Piece number two is, most of those calls are actually generated by the police. And while I think our police departments and our police officers are providing generally good information through their dispatch centers sometimes, in fact, probably most of the time, for whatever reason, that is not related to our dispatch center. So oftentimes, what we might just get is, I need medic. That doesn't tell us what we need to send to them. So the Advanced Send Protocol, and we're testing this in Cornelius, and have had some very positive results with this. And so I do want to take an opportunity to thank the town of Cornelius and the Cornelius Police Chief for working with us on that, because I believe that it's going to be successful in helping the police have a better, more scripted way to get the information to us that we need to provide the proper response. That way, we're not just sending the fire department to check it out, to see if there's a patient. And that way, we're not holding police officers unnecessarily longer waiting for medic, and we're not holding firefighters unnecessarily longer waiting for medic. I'm working with Chief Jennings of CNPD on hopefully getting a meeting set up soon. I believe that might already be set up. One of my staff might know the answer to that. But my goal with that would be to get that protocol in place countywide. And to do that, we're going to need the support of our towns, we're going to need the support of the city, and the police departments, of course, especially in their dispatch centers. It's, it's just a simple protocol answering seven questions that will give us exactly what we need. And I think we could reduce very many of those wait times for those firefighters on those calls. So that's work already underway.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We'll go with Commissioner Leake, then Commissioner Townsend-Eggrum.
Did you call me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm not as astute as the rest of these young people about the use of the fire department. My interest is about the ambulance. And because of my seniors, and we're having more fires now than we've had in the last five years, in given areas of the city, and across this country, really. So my concern is, what is it we need to do to inform the general public to live safer so that the need will not be as great? And one of the things we see is accidents all the time, every day, 77, 85, 99, 95, I'm saying 106 highways. And we hear this on the news all day long, every 10 minutes. It's about traffic, and that's a part of the concern. And I've had three calls this past week where I've had constituents whose weight caused them not to be able to get up because they fall. And they know that it is expensive, because they've used it before as a means of support. And my response is, the only thing you can do is to call the fire department. And they don't call the ambulance service, they call the fire department. So how can we re-educate our people to try to live safer? Or what to do to keep from having to use the cost of the fire department in breaking down doors and trying to get to people who've fallen? One family that called me had two incidents in their family of the same person. So talking with you and listening tonight, has, and, and having this to share with the general public, because I usually give my handouts to the ministers who put in their churches to feed information to the general public. So I need your help.
Yes, ma'am.
I need your help. How to deliver and change that thought process and to make it easier. But with the growth of the city of Charlotte is such that nobody is thinking about how to make it safer. We don't even see the highway patrolman that much to stop the speeding and taking over the streets at night, and what happens that way. So we've got to do, we have to do a better job in our communities to educate our young people and our seniors. So help me, my word is help.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, it's help. How do we get to my seniors? Yes, sir.
So public-
Thank you so much for your time.
Of course.
And thank you for staying tonight.
Well, and, and we've got folks up there from our Public Relations Department as well. And those are the folks that are key in helping make sure that that message is out there. They do an amazing job. In the last couple of years since I've been here, they have ramped up their work on teaching CPR and public education classes, and they are just outstanding. So just recognizing those folks for the great work that they do in our community is unbelievable. But there is so much work still to do, to your point, and it's not just here in Mecklenburg, it's across the state, and it's across the country. Public education on when is the right time to call 911 is important. How to take care of yourself so you don't put yourself in that, that instance in the first place is important. But we also know that there are some people who don't have any other choice. They don't have any other option. They might not have the ability to see a doctor on their own, and the only thing, the only thing they know is to go to the emergency room. And we end up being the backstop for health care for those folks. And we absolutely will continue to do that, and take great care of those folks. It is a challenge nationwide. You know, I, I think I've mentioned to this board before that, you know, we're up to nearly 200,000 responses for service now at medic. About 40,000 of those don't result in an ambulance transport. So there's a lot of people that just, just need us to check, and then they don't even go to the hospital. That's a lot of tremendous expense to, and tremendous, you know, cost of readiness for us to do that. We do it because we want to be there for everybody, and of course, we'll continue to do that. But there is so much work that still needs to be done, so I appreciate you bringing that up. And I hope that we can continue to work together to, to bring public education throughout the county.
Thank you. Commissioner-
Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend-Eggrum, then Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you all again. Like everyone has said, we really respect and appreciate you for all of the hard work that you do, knowing that it is most of the time a thankless job. I have several questions, since I'm the person that's new. Like, I was sitting here Googling some of the information, but I know that I will have additional questions that I want to reserve, not even just for the second round, before maybe later on that we can do. But one of my primary questions tonight is, the funding model that you have for medic, it seems outdated, of course. Who, who organizes that? Who says, is that something that has to go to Raleigh and then is mandated by the North Carolina General Assembly? Who, who assembles the districts? And I saw that Central was kind of narrowed, and I saw that, you know, there were some different zones there. But who assembles the funding model? And also, do you have a foundation? Are there, what, what percentages do the foundations? I would love to see percentages of who provides what in the funding, as a funding model.
Sure. I can actually go over that with you right now. So in the state of North Carolina, the counties are responsible for the provision of EMS services. And so it is at the local level that that is designed. And in this system, it is designed where medic is the ambulance service. We are an exclusive EMS provider. There is not another ambulance provider. Our hospital providers do have some ambulances that they do inter-campus transports and critical care transports and things like that. But we are the only 911 provider within Mecklenburg County. That system was created back in the 90s, which formed medic. We are a joint government agency, so I'm not a county employee, I'm a medic employee, but I am a government employee. I have a board that I report to that's made up of three representatives from Atrium Health, three representatives from Novant Health, and one representative from Mecklenburg County.
And I'm sorry, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to interrupt you-
No, please.
But I know we have limited time. That I understand.
Okay.
The portion that I'm trying to understand is-
Specific to funding.
Do you get subsidies? Okay, so you get a subsidy from Mecklenburg County. How, what, do you get any subsidy from a, a foundation, since you are a nonprofit? Do you get any funding from state, federal, that kind of thing? So that we can see what goes into the funding that you actually receive. And maybe it is that we need to look at, it is a complex funding model, but it may be that we need to look at it and reevaluate it to see where funding comes from. In addition to, and these are just things you can think about, there are some questions that I have about training, and maybe the new training facility can help reduce some of those call times and things of that nature. And I wish we can work with Public Relations and the public on getting that information out on, on the benefits of a training facility. But that's primarily where my question lies.
Yes, ma'am. So I'm, I'm tracking with you now. So there, there are two primary ways that medic is funded. One, and the largest, which is about 75% of our revenue comes in the form of fees for service. That is what we bill and collect from patients for the service that we provide. Medic is unique as a first responder, you know, unlike our fire department and police departments that are fully 100% government-supported and funded. Medic self, is self-reliant by 75% by generating revenue through fees for service. The other 25% or so of our revenue comes in the form of county subsidy. And so that county subsidy is discussed each year with medic as part of our budget process. We submit our complete budget to the county manager, and the county manager then makes her recommendation for medic's budget to you all, which is approved. And that's it. It's really those two sources. There's no other funders.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, then Commissioner Griffin.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Thank you, YTI, for setting up that question, because I'm on a similar track, trying to understand the funding model. And so, when, when I first got on the board in 2018, I remember that folks used to come and, and line up to talk about the, you know, ambulance bills. And there was a lot of complaints around that at the time. And so now we don't have that so much anymore. And is that, my question is, you know, is that because the county is paying a higher subsidy? Or, I'm trying to understand Atrium and Novant's role, and, you know, what kind of funding? I mean, obviously, I don't think they are, you said the counties are responsible, so that doesn't mean the hospital systems are responsible.
Correct.
But like, these are their customers, this is their revenue stream coming into their, like, this doesn't make sense to me. So if you could see the amount of questions on my piece of paper here, you would, I mean, it's just like trying to follow this. At the very beginning, one of the things at the end of your presentation that you stated was that counties, county and medic have no requirement to provide? And then I, I didn't hear that, what you said. And so we have no requirement?
So there were two things at the end there. One is, based on everything that I've learned from the research that I've done, is that I don't believe that the county has an obligation or requirement to fund first responder services, nor does medic, right? Right now, the money comes through medic. And also, in speaking with the State Office of EMS, because I wanted to make sure that we weren't required, you know, if we're required to have these contracts, how does that look? How does it work in other counties? And what I found is that no other counties have contracts for first responder services through their ambulance service. So medic is not required to have a contract with fire departments to provide first responder services.
Okay. Stop.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nope, it's okay. There's a lot.
I have no idea how much time I have left, because we don't have a little number thing going, but that is really helpful. I'm, I'm, okay, I have to just say that, you know, we know that this board supports first responders, right? We totally want to support you guys. And so, county manager, can you help with this idea? Is, are the towns and Charlotte, are we paying subsidies for the towns and for Charlotte?
Yes.
We are?
Yes.
For all of those?
Yes.
Okay. Can you explain that? Like-
Can I explain that?
What is the origin of the subsidy? Like, what's-
The origin of the subsidy goes back to the 1990s, when this medic was, this medic structure was created. And so, as JP indicated, we believe, and we've done a lot of research, we've talked to Joe Penner, it predates him, so the exact origin is not 100% clear, but what we believe is that at that time, we had mostly volunteer fire departments that did not have any taxing authority. So county was providing subsidy to help support that, because they didn't have any mechanism to get funding on their own. Since that time, the system has changed significantly, where we have town and city fire departments who have taxing authority and have the wherewithal to fund their own first responder services, which they do.
To the fire department?
Well, the fire, through the city, right? So the city levies taxes, gives it to the fire department. The towns levy taxes. And so they're already paying, the citizens are already paying for that service. So there's really no reason that the county should be providing any funding to any municipal fire, municipal fire department for first responder services.
So that constitutes a change-
Yes.
-to the 1990 precedent.
Correct. It should have been changed a long time ago, we just never did it. Because this, I mean, Mecklenburg County is significantly different now than it was in the mid-1990s.
Wow.
Let me come to-
And just to end, one, just your question, I think when you came on the board at that time, one of the things that we had proposed was to have the Office of the Tax Collector try to collect delinquent ambulance bills, and there was a tremendous amount of opposition to that. So we pulled that.
That's right.
So I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that. Yeah.
Let me come to Commissioner Griffin to end this particular round, and then we'll come back around to everybody.
What I do know, I think has been said, the function of government first priority is safety of its residents. And this would be considered safe and well, from my perspective. To help me unpack all the questions I can, on two pieces of paper here, can I get Deana whatever this MOU is from 1997? I need to get some context for my questions and responses, because right now, there, there are questions and responses going everywhere. That would help me-
Sure.
-just share it with the board. JP, you said something that the county was responsible for EMS services?
Yes, sir.
Is that, that's in the statute, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Mr. Attorney, just tell me what, where I can get that citation from, so I can put references to, to a lot of this conversation that's going on. You know, in '23, I think that was my first budget, and I think that's when you guys made a presentation about changing your times and services, lights on, no lights off. And our brethren from CFD was there, and it was kumbaya, and two years later, we'd looked, talking about a divorce almost. I'm just trying to figure out-
Yes.
-how do we get from there to here? And I don't want to alarm the general public about the quality of their safety services in terms of ambulance or fire. So I, I just, you know, I could have a thousand questions, but they'd just simply be questions without any context? So if I can get those documents, number one, to kind of see how things are flowing- So, if I can get those documents, number one, to kind of see how things are flowing. And Mecklenburg County's population, I think somewhere I saw, is gonna go up, increase by 500,000 by 2050 or 2030, some huge number. So, we gotta, gotta get this right. If '97 was the MOU period, that's what, 30 years ago almost? So, 30 years from now, you know, we got to, we got to gain, gain this so that we can be consistent in terms of finding first-class services to all the residents of Mecklenburg County. So, if I could get those, that would, that would be good. Your eight zones, your eight zones are without the services of our partners? Is that correct?
No, that still includes the services of our first responder partners. The eight zones are specifically how Medic looks at our responses.
Okay.
Not the fire department responses.
Okay. But, okay, all right. I'm just trying to put it in context. And right now, there's just, there's too many moving parts. And if I can get the paperwork, then I can read it, kind of determine, and I can also reach out. If we're the only county in North Carolina that has this financial relationship with municipalities, I'd like to, like to have that somehow or another, whether Mr. Attorney or Deana or somebody can provide that information, too. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, everybody, we're gonna go around for round two. Madam Clerk, I think at this point, everybody should just need two minutes. I would suggest, let's get our questions out and then the commentary on the back end. But that's just a suggestion. You can handle it how you want. Let's start back with Commissioner Altman. We'll go with Commissioner Altman, Meyer, and then Commissioner Dunlap.
Okay. Take out your pens because I'm gonna give you a bunch of questions.
I'll try to remember.
But before I do, let me just say, you know, between 50 and 150 people, I hear different quotes, are moving here a day. So, it makes sense that we, you know, we are needing to change and grow. And obviously, I understand the manager not wanting to essentially double-tax residents, especially when we are really trying to be trim with our budget. But, but, a couple things, and here are my questions. Number one, I don't really accept that this cannot be broken down by zip code. I think it ought to be. I think we owe that level of transparency, especially when there's so much consternation here. I don't, I don't accept that. I don't want that to be the outcome. I sincerely hope you will find a way to provide this data by zip code to assist in everyone understanding that this is fair and equitable. Number two, can you explain to me why, apparently in Iredelle and Cabarrus County, they have established bases where EMS operates, unlike Mecklenburg? So, if you can address why it's different for us here, and why that, or if you can address for us why it's different here, why we can't do what they're doing in a neighboring county? And also, you have said that there's been no adverse impact to clinical performance. However, I understand that the towns have indeed service-related concerns, and so I want to address that publicly and have transparency around that. And, and, yes, thank you.
Okay. So, on the zip code piece, so I had a really passionate, robust, whatever, whatever you want to use it, conversation with our town managers last week about that. And when I left that conversation, I committed to the group, the group in that room, that we would have a discussion with my board chair that day, first of all. And when I talked to my board chair, and we'll talk more to my board about that, I believe that that can be part of our plan going forward as we continue to look at how we redesign how Medic tracks and reports response times. So, that includes the zones, that includes the exemptions that I talked about before, and I think that should include discussion about zip code reporting, how we can do that, how that best works in there. Now, one thing I want to say is, if we were to make it Medic's requirement to be 90% compliant in 10 minutes and 59 seconds by zip code, I would need many, many, many more ambulances and people to be able to do that and be successful. That's, there's how many zip codes in Mecklenburg County today? So, that would be a significant increase in what Medic would need to be able to be successful with that level of granularity and detail. That's why the system was not set up that way in the first place. Does that make sense, as I see?
Not really, because I thought you said you were basically hitting these targets by zones. And if you're now telling me that if we actually got more clear, we would be missing the targets all the time, and so it makes me think we're not really hitting the targets, we're just obfuscating it.
While you, while you might hit the target in the zone and be very successful in a zone, you might not hit all of the zip codes. You might hit half of the zip codes and still be, I shouldn't say half, but you might hit less of the zip codes and still be compliant in the zone.
Yeah, that really concerns me, but please continue.
So, it just, it's something we have to look at. To your other point, and now I've, now I've lost the other two, I'm sorry.
Oh, the, the way our neighboring counties are able to station.
Okay. Yep, I remember that. So, you mentioned Iredelle and Cabarrus County, and I believe that they both use a form of static deployment. They have built, they have either built specific EMS stations across their county, or they have done that and a combination of sharing fire department stations where they statically deploy their units. That is not how this county was designed back in the 90s. It was designed as what's called a dynamic deployment model. Typically, in a dynamic deployment model, it's a much more efficient and cost-effective way to do the service because you're not having to spend millions of dollars building stations for ambulances, and you're also not paying a cost for static wait time for calls. The ambulances are always on the move. We base our deployment based on demand, based on the hour of the day, the day of the week, so we know how many ambulances we need on the road at any given hour, on any given day, versus just, we have 60 stations and we have 60 ambulances on all the time. We scale it up and down throughout the day. That makes it much more cost-effective. It also makes it so that when those ambulances are out continually running calls, it gives us the ability to bill, which generates our revenue, and it's a significant cost savings to the county to do it that way, which is why many systems across the country, including the other two previous large community and county systems that I've come from previously, do it that way as well.
And quality of care in the north.
And quality of care in the north. So, acknowledge that, have heard those concerns. Anytime that we get a concern on any, any particular call, I want you to know that that goes through a full quality assurance review. It goes through a process where we make sure if there's something that needs to be corrected, it's corrected right away. If it's training issue, whatever that might be, it's corrected in, as fast as we possibly can. And acknowledge that to my comment about no adverse impact to clinical performance. When we look at our clinical performance numbers, there has been zero decline. In fact, we're doing better, as I mentioned before. And that's how we know we've had zero.
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Let me go to Commissioner Meyer, then Commissioner Dunlap.
Thank you. This is clearing up for me. If, if the roles, if, if where you're standing, if you were a fire chief, what's the flip side? What would that person say to us?
As far as, because there's, there's a lot, as far as funding. I think your fire departments would stand up here and say that, one, they need to be funded, fully funded, to do the work that they provide, right? And I don't think anyone would argue with us with that. I think the question is, who funds it? I think what I hear, and I can't speak for them, all right? They're here in this room. I don't want to speak for them. But what I understand is that they believe that because the county's charged with providing EMS service, that the county is also responsible to pay for first responder EMS service. And I don't believe that that's actually the case, at least from what I understand. So, I believe that if they were up here at this podium telling you right now, they would say that the county has a responsibility to fund the fire departments to provide the EMS services that they provide.
But if we don't do, if we don't fund, then they will take a cut? But they're already being paid?
Yes and yes.
Okay. Doesn't make sense.
So, you know, as I understand it, if you use the example of if we were to provide additional funding, it would go to the general fund. I don't know how their funding works.
Okay.
I think either way, the fire department is gonna continue to be fully funded to do what they need to do. But I can't speak for the city either, right? So, you know, I don't know. But, does that make sense, Madam Manager? Just want to make sure.
I mean, it makes perfect sense. I think they think that it's a county responsibility and that we should pay for it. And I disagree. I don't believe that we should be paying for it. I think it's part of what they do.
Okay.
Fundamental disagreement, difference of opinion-
Big fundamental disagreement.
About how this should be funded.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Commissioner Dunlap, then Commissioner Powell.
I will preference my comments by saying, feelings are not facts. Think about that for a minute. Just because somebody feels a certain way, doesn't make it true. Because we keep talking about feelings, but feelings are not facts. He gave you the facts in terms of what the response rate was. We talk about data all the time, but now we can't listen to data. He gave us the facts. Three questions.
Yes, sir.
Is mediation a possibility? What happens if there's an impasse? And would first responders have to respond, no matter what, because of their duty to care?
Three great questions. Mediation, honestly, I'm not sure. I believe it would if it came to that. Ultimately, I think what it comes down to is, is there, are we gonna continue funding or are we not gonna continue funding? If we're not gonna continue funding, then what happens to Medic's first responder agreements? Like I mentioned before, we have three, two towns and one city that have already given us notice to renegotiate. If there's no funding attached to those contracts, will those communities still negotiate and sign a contract with us? That I don't know. And so, there may need to be some form of mediation or something like that along those lines. And I apologize to ask you, give me your second question, sir.
What happens if there's an impasse?
Okay.
And because of their duty to care, would they have to respond anyway?
I remember. So, apologize for that. So, if there's an impasse, and let's say that we cannot come to an agreement on contracts, as I mentioned before, other counties in North Carolina that do not operate with contracts, they operate under what is called the State EMS System Plan. The State EMS System Plan is essentially a conglomeration of documents required by the State Office of EMS that essentially forms the local municipalities or local county governments EMS system. Our fire departments are already in that State EMS Plan. They are rostered in there of the number of personnel that are credentialed as EMTs and who provide EMS service within the county. And that also includes our dispatch protocols and our response protocols, as far as our patient care protocols from the medical director. All of that is outlined in the State EMS Plan. There is at least one community that I'm aware of that has a handbook for first responders that they use that outlines the requirements for first responders within that county and as far as how they will operate within the EMS system. But for the most part, as I understand it, it's all part of the State EMS Plan. So, the, to make it clear, if we didn't have contracts, let's say we couldn't come to an agreement and we were operating without a contract, the fire departments absolutely can still respond to EMS calls as first responders in Mecklenburg County. And our expectation, at least at this point, is that we would continue to dispatch them as we do now. The only difference is, is without that contract, Medic loses the ability to make them go. And it is also important to note that the, the decision to respond to EMS calls for fire departments is up to those individual communities. They are not required to provide first responder services. They can choose to provide first responder services. So, I hope that, I don't know if that added more questions than it answered, but-
Yeah, that just really confused us all.
It's, it's very, it's very complicated.
It is, it is. Let's go, let's go to Commissioner Powell, then we'll come back to Commissioner Leake.
Thank you. So, the budget request, to me, seems small, based on what I'm hearing. It's like, how do we get in this situation, like, the growth is so out of balance? And, you know, people get all excited about tax base, but the burden of this increased population on infrastructure is bigger than the tax base. And so, how do we, how, how can we be balanced in our approach for all the things that we have to take care of? But number one, like Commissioner Griffin and Altman were talking about, it's a first-order obligation. And because it's a first-order obligation, there is emotion. You know, my father died when he was 48 because the ambulance didn't get there fast enough. No firefighters came, no ambulance. I love all of, everybody, I love first responders. Everybody wants to get there, but we cannot do what we need to do if we don't invest more in Medic. And so, I think you need 12 ambulances, two that are up in the North Region more often. I can't back down on that. You know, I don't want it to be static deployment. I don't want that. I want it to be strategic and smart, but I feel like it needs, you can see the deficit. It is a rare day when I see an ambulance in North Mecklenburg, and I always notice it because it's so rare. So, you know, I'm hoping that you're asking for what you need. I know that it's gonna take multi-year approach-
Yes.
-to do it because it's so far behind.
Yes.
I, I really support this. Hello, Grace? Outstanding, outstanding employees for Medic and for the fire department. I really appreciate your good faith effort because you get beat up all the time and you still come back and try to do what is best for the community and to respond as fast as possible. And you can't do it if you don't have what you need. So, I, I think you need 12 ambulances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leake, then Townsend Ingram.
Thank you. There's a fire at my house. Do I call the volunteer, the fire department? Do I call the regular fire department?
Just simply call 911 and tell them that there's a fire at your house.
And 911 will reach home.
And they will get you the help that you need.
Who will come?
That would be the fire department. Yes, ma'am.
You're the fire department.
No, ma'am. We're the ambulance service.
The volunteer?
No. The, in, in your community there, it would be the Charlotte Fire Department in District 2, ma'am, that would come to your house and help you, if you had a fire.
And the reason I said it that way, because the average woman's age level, many of them are single, and something happens, I fall. Do I call the regular fire department or do I call the volunteer?
You just call 911? When you, when you, when you call 911, the first question they're gonna ask you is, do you need police, fire, or ambulance?
Right.
And so, if you have a fire, you say fire. If you have a medical emergency, you say ambulance.
And I'm asking basic questions-
Hmm?
...that the basic citizen will ask, and especially those who are seniors and have not experienced, to make those decisions.
Yes, ma'am. Understood.
So, I, I appreciate it, and I'm, I'm thinking I'm paying for it in my taxes, but that's not true. I'm not paying for it in my taxes, am I right?
You, you are paying for it in your taxes. Yes, ma'am. You are.
I'm paying for the fire department in my taxes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so then you better come, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I fell on the, I fell out here a couple of, maybe two years ago, three years. Had it not been for Michael Bryant and Deana coming to get me, I'd have been left out there because the lights were off, it was dark. And I had some men work for the county, I mean, on the board, looked at me and kept walking till they phoned, went on out the door.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leake. We're gonna go with-
That's right.
Commissioner Townsend Ingram-
And the chairman was one of them.
And Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, again, lots and lots of questions, complexity here, but it seems like to me that we're all trying to put a square peg into a round hole. The funding model needs to be revisited. It needs to be looked at. We are not the same. Our infrastructure is not the same. It cannot be funded the same way. So, I think that that needs to be revisited. With regard to what Commissioner Altman said and the zip codes, even if we don't get the percentages in the zip codes, we still need to measure it and see what level of service we're getting in those zip codes. So, not that we would necessarily hold you to attain those services, but we definitely need to know. We cannot measure what we, you know, we, we don't know what we don't measure. And to that end, do we get reports or do you measure things like when the person is there, not just accuracy, efficiency, and speed, but do you measure the customer service level? Like, and I'm, I'm going off the fact that I've had a couple of incidents with medic or CFD, like, is there cultural bias training? Are there complaints that are measured, things of that nature?
There's all of that.
Okay.
And we actually have a, a third-party external vendor that does our customer service surveys for us.
Thank you. I would love to see that too, in addition to the, the funding model.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm, I'm still back on, we're the only county that provides a subsidy. And I, one thing I understand is that we are different than other counties, right? Like, we are like the most urban county, and so it makes sense that we are different. So, Deana, what you're saying is that the taxing authority, the burden, needs to go on to the municipalities as opposed to the county. And if the county, if the municipalities want to be providing that service level, then they need to pay for it through their taxes, not through ours. Is that...
Well, what I would say is that their taxes are already paying for that because it's part of what the fire department does. So, when they fund their fire department, they're funding first responder services as part of that. But now they're saying that they want Mecklenburg County to pay for that service when their residents are already paying for it.
Right. Okay. But the fire departments, you said earlier, they're not required to provide EMS services. So, they could just say, well, we're not going to provide EMS services. I guess what, what I'm trying to get at is, we're the county and, you know, because we're the county, like, we have to bring equity to all of the people within the county, right? I mean, like, how do you, like, if you have some municipalities that EMS is, is not providing services because they don't, they're not funding enough, you know what I'm trying to get at here?
But they, but they are. I mean, they already are, and they're part of the State EMS Plan.
Yes.
So, do you want to talk a little bit more about that? Because I think that there might have been some confusion there.
Well, in the State, in the State EMS Plan, essentially that governs how EMS works in Mecklenburg County. And so, all of our fire departments are in that plan because all of that have opted in to, to provide first responder services in this county. And they're already funding that and they're already doing that today. We're required to keep a roster that the, each of the fire departments have to keep of all their credentialed EMS personnel that stays up, and they operate underneath a medical, a medical control protocols that are created by our medical director and our medical control board. It just essentially creates that whole dynamic.
So, they're already, they're already part of the system and they're already paying to be part of the system. So, there is no issue with equity as far as I can tell because they're already providing the service and they're already paying for it.
Alright, let's move to Commissioner Griffin, please.
Two quick points. I know the counties are different, but how, how do you, how do we compare with response times with Wake or Forsyte or Guilford? Although they're different, and is there anticipation that response times will increase once we separate or response times remain the same or they will get worse?
Okay. So, I'm not an expert at all on how all the other counties track and report response times, but what from I do unders, from what I do understand, the way that medic tracks and reports response times is far more sophisticated and far more in-depth with a greater level of responsibility.
Sorry to interrupt you. I was trying to follow Commissioner Dunlap. He likes data, you know, I like data. So, I'm just trying to figure out if there's any data out there, and if not, then there's no, then you just say there's no data.
I would have to, I would have to ask. I do think that they're a little different, and some may not even track response times at all the way they, that we do.
Okay. And for Mecklenburg County, your forecast is that we can still hit our response times even if we separated or...
For medic, specific to medic and medics-related response times, if we can continue to build medic up over the course of the next few years, including this year's budget request, then yes, sir, we can absolutely hit those response times.
Your, your presentation said we beat industry standards with cardiac arrests because of our partners? What if our partners aren't as, as committed as they were before this?
That's exactly why I said it that way, sir, because especially on a cardiac arrest, if we didn't have our firefighters respond at all to those calls, that would, that would make a significant impact on patient care, and we would not be able to have those types of level of cardiac arrest survival in this community. Or, or there would have to be some other means to provide that service.
Alright. I know we went through multiple rounds. I'm not sure if it was helpful or not at this point, to be honest, but I do appreciate the time. I appreciate the responses. A couple of things I want to lift up. One, we certainly have a, a chasm between multiple factions, and we've got to close this divide. I think the, the board, Commissioner Griffin said it best, in my opinion, when he talked about our responsibilities to the community with safety being at the top of that list. So, one, a couple of things that I want to know, and, and Deana, you may have to answer some of this. What's the frequency of the meeting between the towns? What, and I guess this is two separate buckets, but what the town issues are, the fire department, what is that frequency? When's the next meeting? What, what does that, what does that look like? What is, what's going on there?
So, right now for us with Charlotte Fire Department, we currently have a memorandum of, of understanding in place. That's through July of this year, I believe, and we are meeting twice a month, and we have been meeting twice a month since January, and so we just had our last meeting on Tuesday.
Have the meetings closed the gap any? I mean, have you, are you narrowing down the gap of...
The meetings with CFD have been phenomenal. They have been great meetings.
Are we narrowing down the issues that we're trying to address that...
Absolutely, and that, and that's why I mentioned there was a slide in there about what common themes were. Those common themes come out of our meetings with CFD and our other meetings of, of all the things that someone could ask for, right? These are the common things that everybody seems to believe are important. And so, we've identified those, and we're actually already working on solutions, and I think well on the way to solutions with those.
So, with respect to CFD, right now, if I heard you correctly in the beginning of the presentation, their ask is to go to 1.8 million and eventually to 10 million. Is that...
That's how I understand it. They did a presentation to us with their finance folks, and in that presentation, they went over a detailed presentation with us over what it costs to provide service. Their estimate is around $10 million from comments that I heard. My understanding is that over a period of time, however long that is, I don't know, that's not been specified, but over a period of time, my understanding is that eventually the city would like to get to that 10 million number so that they are fully, fully funded for what they believe is their cost to provide service.
Alright. Deana, you want to add anything?
Not at this time, thank you.
Understood. Well, let me, let me add a couple of other things to this, and, and again, thank you, I appreciate it. I'm hearing, we are hearing from you. I think we understand where the manager's position is on some of this. I think our friends in the towns have a completely different position that I got to get a better understanding and, and grapple with where they're saying that, where we're disconnected. Because I, I just don't, I don't have that just yet, clearly. I would like to see stakeholders in the room so that I could hear the counterpoint to what's being said, because without hearing the counterpoint, I just don't, I can't call balls and strikes, I think, the way that I need to or the way that I want to, to be able to make a decision. So, that's a takeaway that I'm going to have to work on there so I can hear both sides and then figure this thing out and work with, with my colleagues so that we can come to a, a decision that makes sense for the best, the betterment of the community. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Madam Manager, I'll circle up with you to see what, how we can approach that to your multiple sides, I guess, and get a better understanding with all the stakeholders in the room. With that being said, thank you again.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I know we peppered you with a lot.
It's okay. It's important. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, JP. That concludes my manager's report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Alright, next we'll move to consent. Is there motion to approve the items not pulled from consent?
So, move.
Second.
Alright, moved and seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Let's go to the consent items that have been pulled. We'll start with 25-0202. Interlocal agreement with the City of Charlotte funding of Kings Branch Stream and Sewer Project at Archdale Drive. Commissioner Leake.
Yes, I pulled this in terms of finding out if that had any dealings with District Two, what would suffer.
It does not, actually. I think it's in District Five.
District Five, I'm sorry. Thank you. Now, my people are happy. Thank you. So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Next item is 25-0205. Amend the county's major system component of the stormwater fee. Commissioner Leake.
Same issue, fees.
This is the major system stormwater fee, which is the responsibility of the county. So, these fee increases will be coming to the board.
Say that louder. You know, you, the fees will be coming.
To the board at a later date for approval.
For approval? So, we will be paying that?
It includes District Two.
What do you think it might be?
I don't know.
Alright, well, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Moving on, 25-0210, I'm sorry, 25-0207, tax refunds. Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just really wanted to raise this as a little bit of awareness because I was approached by WCNC like a week or two ago to do an on-camera interview. Sure. To do an on-camera interview about the vehicles being overvalued in Mecklenburg County. And so, I wanted to just raise awareness on this issue that what, what I learned through the process was that all vehicles in North Carolina are valued by a contractor, which is chosen by the state. We don't choose that contractor, the state does. My personal vehicle was overvalued by $10,000. And so, by reaching out to the tax assessor, I was able to get the, the value reduced by $10,000, which saved me $75 on my personal property tax bill. So, the moral of the story is that everyone is responsible for knowing the value of their vehicle, and the county values, you know, like 800,000 vehicles a year. So, you know, this is all computerized and spreadsheets and that kind of thing. So, like, something could be missed. So, a very small percentage could have an error. So, just wanting to raise awareness about that. If you think that your, your vehicle value is different from what the county is saying on your property tax bill, you can reach out to Tiffany Gibson at mechnc.gov or call So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any unreadiness?
Yeah, just, just... Thank you for raising that, Susan, and, and you might add that there is a tax appeal board that hears those concerns.
Yes. If you don't, if you just call, you can do it really informally, and then if you have to take it to the next level, that they will do a hearing for you and all that.
Thank you both for that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Moving on to the last item, 25-0210. It's construction contract Sugar Creek Green Wave McDowell Farms Drive to York Mount Road. Commissioner Leake.
Pull this for the consciousness of the people who live in the area. So, move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. We are going to move to commissioner reports, and we will start with Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
No report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Powell.
I support, fully support the medic budget request.
You're so surprised.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunlap, thank you.
No report.
Commissioner Altman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deana, I don't know if you feel comfortable opining, but if you do, I would be interested what you think the tax implications would be if we were just to totally do what's being asked with this medic issue? Because my back-of-the-envelope calculations, if it's, is like, it would be maybe $6 million a year, increasing every year if we set this precedent? Like, do you have any sense of what the cost would be for the ask that's on the table?
I don't right now, but I think that, to your point, I think it's not the first year, it's, it's the succeeding years, because once you do it, it's forever.
Okay.
And the cost is going to continue to go up, and so...
So, I heard a million from, 1.8 million from the city, a million from, I think...
1.8 million from Huntersville, 1.6 million from the City of Charlotte.
Right.
And that's what we have so far. We don't have all the other towns in terms of what they want.
Right. So, I think we should understand what the implications are to our budget and tax rate also. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go with Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I had the opportunity to stand with Congresswoman Alma Adams and our chairman, Mark Dorell, at a day in action, which was a press conference in the fight to save Social Security from the current administration's chopping block. There were a number of awesome speakers, ordinary people in all walks of life, and they were all pointing to the fact that without Social Security, many, many seniors will be devastated. Social Security has been a promise to the American people for 90 years. It is often called an entitlement, but make no mistake, people have been paying into the system for their entire working life. We know that Elon Musk has called Social Security the biggest Ponzi scheme of all time. This person is one of the top advisors that the President of the United States has surrounded himself with and given a lot of power to. Cutting Social Security to give tax breaks to billionaires and millionaires is unconscionable and un-American. We all must stand up and speak out. We cannot let this happen. As Congresswoman Adams said, this is not a blue or red issue, it is a red, white, and blue issue. This affects everyone of every party, every color, especially the working class. This literally reaches every family. We need everyone to reach out to your U.S. Congressional Representative and your U.S. Senator and to tell them why you want them to protect Social Security. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Meyer.
And I want to add Medicare and Medicaid. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leake.
Senior Day at the government for District Two, and that's taking place on the 17th at Valerie Woodard Center.
Commissioner Griffin.
I just want to lift up PIO, the first coffee with commissioners I experienced at Eastway Recreation Center, and was just delighted to hear just ordinary folk having conversations about their day-to-day lives and the impact that the county has on their day-to-day lives and the individual concern. So, it was phenomenal, much better than I had anticipated. So, PIO, keep doing that. They're really great getting us out into the community. Second point, responding to the conversation about medic. Some of you, Dunlap grew up here. I grew up when the Film Homes was the ambulance service here in Mecklenburg County. The concern then, and as we transition, was the quality of service for certain communities in Mecklenburg County. Whatever the decisions happens to, from this discussion and debate, I hope we keep in mind to have the highest quality of service to all of the residents of Mecklenburg County and particularly those communities who struggle. So, keep that in mind as we go through this deliberation. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to everybody tonight. I know this was a longer-than-usual meeting, but before we leave, I'd like to do a special recognition, someone who's very important to us, to those of us who meet here in the Government Center in this chamber on a regular basis, is not going to be with us. This will be the last meeting for this individual. Most of you all know Officer Charlie Eubanks over here. Awesome, exactly. 27 years, Charlie Eubanks. 27 years of dedicated service to our community and the Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department.
A real human being.
He's been here until June. And so, Charlie, you've been a joy. It's just been amazing. You've been here since I've been here, and I'm just ecstatic for you. We wish you many years of health and happiness and want you to come up and shake our hands, please, so that we can say thank you.
For being real.
Congratulations.
I'm going to take a hug.
I don't get to cheer.
That's great. That's service.
I understand what the struggle is like. I know what he's been through. I did those same 27 years. All I can tell you, man, is enjoy every moment of it.
Or you can be a glutton for punishment and run for county commission.
Well, thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. Charlie, best wishes to you and your family. Thank you so much for everything you've done. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Meet adjourned.